Thank you, merci. Please remain standing, and I'm now going to ask councillor Currie to introduce the performers of our national anthem. And the performers of our national anthem today include councillor Currie.
Mr. Mayor, you know how we want to see Ottawa recognized as a music city? You know how you asked all of us on council to go out to our communities to find and showcase the musical talent to start our council meetings for the performing of O'Canada? Well, I didn't have to look far, whether I was in Canada or even at City Hall. We all know how skilled all of the people who work for the city are. They have so many credentials, talents, and skills that we see every day, no matter what department we're working with. However, what some of you don't know is how musically talented the people who work for the city are. Today, I thought it might be nice for them to show off their musical talents. Today, to do just that, we have Amanda Williams on French horn. Amanda is currently a constable with the Ottawa Police Service and plays with the Concert Band of Canada. Zachary Lattiser on trumpet. Zach is a diesel rail controller at OC Transpo. He plays trumpet in the Concert Band of Canada and the Central Airs Concert Band. He was once a member of the Governor General's Foot Guards Band. Kat Russell on trumpet. Catherine has been an epidemiologist at Ottawa Public Health for over 20 years. She plays trumpet in the Concert Band of Canada and is a behind-the-scenes volunteer for local community musical groups like Suzart and Orpheus. Corinne Thomas on flute. Corinne is a zoning plan examiner with Building Code Services. She plays flute in the Napaian Concert Band. Deborah LaRocque on French horn. Deborah is a program coordinator at the Saint Laurent complex for Recreation Cultural and Facility Services. She plays in the Ottawa Wind Ensemble and the Ottawa Chamber Orchestra. Peter Trachka on French horn. Peter worked from 1978 to 1983 as a third-sector liaison officer at City Living. City Living was what we now call Ottawa Community Housing. Peter plays in the Canada Symphony and the Canada Wind Ensemble. John Bach on trombone. John is a project manager with Infrastructure Services, Municipal Design and Construction. He plays in the Concert Band of Canada and the National Capital Concert Band. So not under the leadership of our city manager or other city leaders today, but under the fearless leadership of the conductor of the Concert Band of Canada and music teacher at Holy Trinity, Mary Blay, who over her career has played with the Parkdale Orchestra, the Gloucester Community Concert Band, the Canada Symphony Orchestra, the Napaian Concert Band, the Cantiamo Women's Chorus, and the Concert Band of Canada. So given that we all have so many talents, it would be great to hear all of you use your natural talent to sing along with us today. So one more thing. So whenever I am introduced at an event, people always end by saying, "And councillor Currie plays French horn in the Concert Band of Canada." And then I get up there and I say, "I didn't bring my French horn today. It's not great at campfires either." People laugh. Well, Mr. Mayor, I thought today might be the perfect time to bring it.
us with that wonderful rendition of O'Canada, and thank you again councillor Currie.
I would like to invite councillor DeRash to join me.
To join me as we do something very, very special today. I've been looking forward to this, and I know councillor DeRash has as well. We are welcoming and recognizing today the members of HMCS Ottawa. Great to have them here. They are joining us this morning, including Commander Justin Simmons, Lieutenant Commander Trevor Robinson, Chief Petty Officer First Class Malcolm Allen Johnston, Lieutenant Navy Keating William Teft, Chief Petty Officer Second Class Terry Thompson, Master Sailor Danielle Brooks, and Corporal Rong Hu. Thank you all for joining us today. We're really, really grateful to have your presence here. And I want to thank you and the more than 200 crew members that joined you for a five-month deployment recently to the Indo-Pacific region. You carried out that mission as part of Royal Canadian Navy operations Horizon and Neon.
Both were designed to promote peace and stability in that part of the world.
While protecting Canada's shared interests alongside our international partners and allies, Australia, Japan, France, India, and the United States, to name a few.
Through this deployment, you played an important role in preserving Canada's sovereignty and furthering security across the Indo-Pacific region.
Through this deployment, you played an important role in preserving Canada's sovereignty and furthering security across the Indo-Pacific. You also supported each other through long months away from home. That takes courage and commitment. And I want to thank each of you for your service to our country and for being role models for all of us here in Ottawa. And I also want to acknowledge your families, who are always called upon to hold things together on the home front while you are at sea. We are so, so proud of each and every one of you, and we are proud of HMCS Ottawa. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. I'd now like to invite councillor DeRash to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say a few words this morning, welcome the crew of HMCS Ottawa. A few years ago, I had the privilege to sail with a sister ship, HMCS St. John's, under the Navy's Canadian Leaders at Sea program. And I pledged at that time to be an ambassador to the Navy. It is a remarkable institution with a tremendous heritage that we commemorated yesterday as part of Remembrance Day. I would reflect on the role you play, not just in terms of defending our sovereignty, in terms of keeping us safe, but the goods that we consume, the goods that we export. We're probably on a ship a few days ago, and it's so important that we have a strong Navy to serve. I had the honor and privilege to visit the ship earlier this summer. And you were in dry dock at the time, but nonetheless, the staff was working very hard to get the ship ready for your next deployment. And one thing I did observe is many of the tributes that are on board to the City of Ottawa, many of them date to the ship's origin, which is in the 1990s. So it was pre-amalgamation. And earlier today, before the council meeting, we presented you with a sign from Riverside South, Ralph Hennessy, who was an admiral in the Navy. And this will be the first post-amalgamation sign that hopefully you will proudly display on the ship. So thank you very much for your service, and it's an honor to see you here today. And good luck with your upcoming mission. Thank you.
Yep, so I'd like to invite the members of HMCS Ottawa to come forward, and we'll take a photograph together. Thank you. proud of you. Et merci conseiller DeRash.
And thank you councillor.
I'll ask now for the roll call.
Councillor Luloff.
Good morning, Robert.
Councillor Dudas.
I'm here.
Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Currie.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseillère Plante.
Ici.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Troster.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
Good morning.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Ici.
Councillor Kitz.
Here.
Councillor Skolski.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Conseilier DeRash.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Councillor Lowe.
Here.
Mayor Sutcliffe.
Here.
Monsieur Maunzavon Corum.
Merci beaucoup.
You have quorum.
Information of minutes from the meeting of the 22nd of October, including the confidential minutes, are those carried? Declarations of interest, councillor Currie?
In accordance with Sections 5, 5.1, and 6 of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, RSO 1990 as amended, I, Cathy Currie, declare a potential deemed direct pecuniary interest in the following item: Official Plan Amendment to extend the urban boundary to include the South March Urban Expansion Area Boundary, File 0101240025, as I own property adjacent to the proposed expansion area.
Thank you councillor Currie. Are there any other declarations of interest? I'll note the communications on the agenda. There were no regrets that were filed. Motion to introduce reports, councillor DeRash.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Troster, that the following reports related to the 2026 draft budget estimates be received and tabled. One, the report from the Chief Financial Officer, Finance and Corporate Services Department, entitled Draft 2026 Operating and Capital Budgets. Two, the report from the Committee of Adjustment, entitled Committee of Adjustment, 2026 Draft Operating Budget. Three, the report from the Ottawa Board of Health, entitled Ottawa Board of Health, 2026 Draft Operating Budget. Four, the report from the Ottawa Public Library Board, entitled Ottawa Public Library Board, 2026 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. Five, the report from the Ottawa Police Services Board, entitled Ottawa Police Services Board, 2026 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. And that the rules of procedure to be suspended to receive and consider the following reports from the Finance and Corporate Service Department, as they provide information supplemental to the 2026 budget reports being tabled at this meeting. One, the report from the Director of Fleet Services, entitled 2026 Fleet Vehicle and Equipment Plans, information supplemental to the budget estimates. Two, the report from the Chief Human Resource Officer, entitled 2025 FTE Analysis Report, information supplemental to the budget estimates. And that Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 29, Community Services Committee Report 19, Environment and Climate Change Committee Report 20, Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report 30, Planning and Housing Committee Report 56, and Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Report 2022 be received and considered.
Thank you councillor DeRash. Is that carried? All right, we're going to skip over the budget items on the agenda and move to item number 18, which is Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee. 18.1 is the June 30th, 2024 Rural Residential Land Survey. Is that received? 18.2 is the Official Plan Amendment for the South March Urban Expansion Area. Is that carried? We will hold item 18.3, which is the zoning bylaw amendment for Rita Valley Drive. From Community Services Committee, item 19.1 is the Older Adult Plan. Is that carried? 19.2 is the Integrated Transition to Housing Strategy Closeout. Is that carried? From Environment and Climate Change Committee, item 20.1 is the Solid Waste Master Plan 2025 Annual Update. Is that carried? Item 20.2 is the Climate Ready Ottawa Strategy. Is that carried? Hold that, please, Mr. Mayor. Item 20.3 is the motion from councillor Kavanaugh on tree dedication. Is that carried? From Planning and Housing Committee, 21.1 is the zoning bylaw amendment for 3055 Richmond Road. Is that carried? 21.2 is the Official Plan Amendment for O'Keefe Court. Is that carried? 21.3 is the motion from councillor Gower for the Stittsville Lions Club Identification Signage. Is that carried? From Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, 22.1 is the harmonization of speed limits on Jeanne-Dark Boulevard North. Is that carried? 22.2 is the motion from councillor DeRash, always stop at Solarium Avenue and Andromeda Road. Is that carried?
Carried.
And the bulk consent agenda. Is that carried?
Carried.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So we will go back to item 11 on the agenda, which is the start of our budget presentation. So first of all, I'll just, with respect to our colleague Sean Menard, I'm going to drop this on the table here. It's a big budget. It is budget time. And I will just point out and draw attention to the fact that just last week, the federal government presented its 2025 budget, and today we are presenting our 2026 budget. So we're actually 51 weeks ahead of the federal government's timetable. Colleagues, the spring of 2022 was a difficult time in our city. We had just experienced... and the subject of a public inquiry. Confidence in policing and city government were low. I ran for mayor because I still believed in city government. I believed it could be better. Je croyais que nous pouvions rassembler les gens pour faire avancer Ottawa.
I thought we could help Ottawa move forward.
Keep tax increases low and still invest in what matters most. Today, as we table the draft 2026 budget, I'm renewing my commitment to make Ottawa safer, more reliable, and more affordable. Budgets are about choices. We have a choice between high taxes and big spending, or a balanced, responsible approach that protects affordability and invests in our residents' priorities. I spend a lot of time traveling around our wonderful and beautiful city. I hear from families who are worried about the rising cost of food and housing, small business owners who are struggling with inflation and economic uncertainty, public servants who are worried about losing their jobs.
People are worried about their future, and our role is to bring them stability and hope.
And it's our job to provide stability and hope. That's what this budget does. It's about protecting affordability while investing in what matters most to our residents. Like families across Ottawa, we are managing our finances carefully. Over the past three years, we have now found $253 million in savings and efficiencies. I want to thank my colleagues on the Service Review Working Group for all of the effort that went into achieving those results. That is a quarter of a billion dollars of savings. That is the equivalent of a 12% tax increase we have avoided, or more than $530 per household in savings. That discipline has allowed us to keep the average property tax increase over the past three years to below 3%, the lowest of any major city in Canada, while other cities like Toronto and Vancouver have seen at times double-digit increases. Our Fairness for Ottawa campaign has led to historic funding from our federal and provincial partners. Last year, the province of Ontario committed over half a billion dollars to Ottawa. Earlier this year, the federal government invested $180 million towards our transit priorities. And the province's commitment to upload the LRT will save Ottawa taxpayers billions of dollars, including about $85 million a year. That's money that will go right back into improving public transit.
This financial discipline and historic commitments means that we can invest significantly in our priorities.
And those historic commitments mean that we can invest significantly in our priorities: public safety, public transit, affordable housing, support for vulnerable residents, and repairing our roads and sidewalks. Council directed the overall tax increase for 2026 to be 3.75%, including transit, policing, and all other areas. That is below last year's increase, and again, one of the lowest increases in Canada. Some people may say it's too low, but I will always fight to protect residents during an affordability crisis. Higher taxes add inflation and increase costs for both homeowners and renters. The Finance Department will go through a detailed presentation on the budget, but I want to provide a few highlights of how we are significantly increasing our investment in several key areas.
First, this budget supports our most vulnerable.
Ottawa is a caring city, but rising costs, mental health challenges, the opioid crisis, and food insecurity are putting more people at risk. We are increasing funding, the total funding for programs that support vulnerable residents, to $222 million. We're investing this term $105 million in affordable housing, compared to $45 million last term. That's an increase of 133%. By the end of 2026, we will have delivered over 850 new affordable units, more than double the total last term. A few weeks ago, I committed to end youth homelessness by 2030. This budget invests $400,000 in the Youth Homelessness Action Plan, and $476,000 more for food security, a 15% increase, to help local food banks and other agencies.
This budget invests in public safety.
This budget invests in public safety. We've made major progress on our paramedic response times. Level zero events, when no ambulances are available, have dropped by nearly 80%. In 2026, we'll hire 23 more paramedics to keep improving service. We will also invest in our police service with a $26.1 million budget increase, including hiring 25 new officers, funding district policing, and launching body-worn cameras for frontline officers. The Anchor program, which offers a non-police response to mental health calls, has been a success in Centertown. It handled 4,500 calls in its first year, freeing up police and paramedic resources. On top of the original pilot project to serve even, on top of the expansion to the original pilot project to serve even more of Centertown, this budget also includes $700,000 to expand Anchor to another part of our city. We're also investing $3.6 million to replace breathing equipment for our firefighters because their safety is absolutely essential.
This budget makes historic investments in transit.
This budget makes historic investments in public transit. The OC Transpo operating budget will grow next year to $938.7 million. That's an increase of about 30% since 2022, and it's a record investment in public transit. We're increasing the transit levy by 8% for the second straight year, while keeping the fare increase at 2.5% and freezing Equipass and Community Pass rates to protect affordability. In 2026, the O train East extension will open, bringing LRT to Orleans, with the West extension to follow in 2027. In addition to investing in expanded light rail, the budget includes $155.6 million for bus and train maintenance, and $177.1 million in capital improvements, including preparations for more zero-mission buses. Those are critical to meeting our environmental targets. By the way, we're also investing $9 million towards the Climate Change Master Plan. That's a 50% increase over this year.
This budget invests in repairing our roads and sidewalks.
This budget invests significantly in repairing our roads and sidewalks. When I ran for mayor in 2022, I promised to increase road resurfacing by $100 million this term. We have exceeded that goal. The 2026 budget brings total investment in road resurfacing to $533 million. That's a 50% increase over last term. We're investing $20.4 million to widen Carp Road, and $56 million to advance the Green Bank realignment in Barhaver. Design work will begin on widening Bryan Coburn Boulevard. Sidewalk rehabilitation funding will rise to $25.4 million this year, part of a 77% increase over last term. We're also investing $3.6 million in rural ditching and drainage projects, bringing total spending this term to $10.7 million. That's up 80% over last term.
This budget invests more in more and better community space for our residents.
This budget invests in more and better community spaces for our residents. We're maintaining and upgrading the places where our residents gather: our community centers, our parks, and our arenas, with $75 million in 2026. That includes $6.6 million for the Fernbank District Park, $3.5 million for the expansion of the Larry Robinson Arena in Osgood, and a significant investment in the new Riverside South Recreation Complex.
This budget is fiscally responsible.
This budget is fiscally responsible. We should all be proud of the state of the city's finances. As we heard last week during the Landsdowne debate, our finances are in excellent shape. The provincial debt ratio is 25%. The limit is 25%, but we are below 5%. Our credit rating remains excellent. Ottawa's finances are strong and stable. This budget strikes a balance. It protects residents during an affordability crisis, but it also invests. It invests significantly in what matters most: public safety, public transit, affordable housing, supporting the most vulnerable, and improving roads, sidewalks, and other infrastructure.
Public safety, public transit, affordable housing, supporting the most vulnerable, and improving roads, sidewalks, and other infrastructure.
This is possible because of the approach we have taken during this term of council: finding a quarter of a billion dollars in savings and efficiencies, and attracting more than a billion dollars of investment from other levels of government. Maybe that's another level the government calling right now with more money. We can keep taxes low and invest significantly in our priorities because we are doing that hard work: finding savings and efficiencies and attracting the investment from other levels of government. My pledge to my fellow members of council and to Ottawa residents is this: I will never stop fighting to keep tax increases low. I will never give up on finding savings and efficiencies at City Hall. I will never give up on getting Ottawa's fair share from other levels of government. Colleagues, we face a lot of challenges as a city, but I'm excited about the future of Ottawa. I refuse to be negative. I refuse to see this as glass half-empty. I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic, that with the investments we're making, we can make a significant difference in the lives of our residents. This is a budget that delivers for all of Ottawa: for our rural communities, our suburban neighborhoods, and our urban core. It's a budget that aspires to make our city better for everyone, especially for our children and grandchildren. It keeps Ottawa moving forward, delivering stability in uncertain times.
It keeps Ottawa moving forward in uncertain times.
That reaffirms my commitment to make Ottawa safer, more reliable, and more affordable. Thank you. Merci. I'll turn it over to our city manager now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to say thank you on behalf of the team for your ongoing guidance and support in building the 2026 draft budget. Bonjour, good morning, everyone. First, I'd like to recognize the efforts of our Finance and Corporate Services, led by our General Manager, Cyril Rogers, along with the senior leadership team who've contributed to the development of this year's draft budget. Je remercie tous les membres de Conseil pour votre temps, votre idée.
I would like to thank everyone for your time, for your ideas, and for your collaboration while we are preparing the draft budget.
The development of the 2026 budget has been challenging. I don't think that's a surprise. We have external financial pressures, got some slower recovery in our transit ridership, some challenges with the global economy. They're all challenges for us, but despite this, council continues to prioritize investments, fiscal prudence, and financial sustainability, which has resulted in the city's strong financial position. And I want to reinforce that the city continues to actively participate in regular discussions with other levels of government regarding our unique financial challenges and the need for equitable funding and support. And collectively, we've made progress with the Ottawa-Ontario Deal, investing over half a billion dollars in shared priorities over three years. We're working with the provincial government on uploading the city's LRT, and the draft budget includes the federal government's permanent transit funding, the first year of a 10-year commitment. And we will continue this work. Et nous allons continuer ce travail.
We will continue working hard for you.
Draft 2026 operating capital budget before council today underscores the city's dedication to make key investments in affordable housing, keeping residents, communities, business, their well-being safe and secure, protecting the environment, and preserving and building resilient infrastructure to improve the quality of life throughout Ottawa. And the draft budget adheres to council's direction of setting a municipal tax increase of no more than 3.75%, investing in term of council priorities while maintaining a prudent approach to long-term financial stability. It's important to acknowledge city staff's ongoing commitment to service excellence, continuous improvement, innovation, and creativity throughout this budget process. Il est important de reconnaître.
It is very important to highlight the engagement of the personnel in terms of excellence and innovation throughout the budget cycle.
The city has adopted formalized approaches to reviewing services and processes for potential efficiencies and improvements through service reviews and continuous improvement initiatives. With the Service Review and the Agile Government Working Groups oversight, along with council and staff input, I am proud to share that we have made significant base budget reinvestments. Since 2023, service reviews and initiatives have achieved almost $208 million in savings and identified an additional $45 million in the draft 2026 budget for a total of $253 million, which is equivalent to a tax avoidance increase of approximately 12%. And by focusing on the simplification, the automation, and standardization of processes through our continuous improvement efforts, we've demonstrated our ability to create organizational capacity, enhance our productivity, leverage data, avoid costs, absorb growth without the need for additional resources, and ultimately make more strategic decisions to deliver greater value for taxpayer dollars. And I want to acknowledge the members of the Service Review Working Group, Mayor Sudcliffe, Councillor Carr, Councillor Currie, and Councillor Skolski, as well as the members of the Agile Government Working Group, again, Mayor Sudcliffe, Councillor Brown, Councillor Hubley, Councillor Kitz, and Councillor Plante. Thank you. Un grand merci. Additionally, I'd like to acknowledge the various boards and city staff who have contributed to both of these groups. All have done extraordinary work to find savings and efficiencies without compromising services and in many instances, improving access to and enhancing frontline services. In draft budget 2026, we're making a historic investment of $1.9 billion in capital programs and infrastructure, and together, these investments will strengthen our city's infrastructure and support a growing, sustainable Ottawa. Today, we're just not presenting a set of numbers, but a plan for navigating our year ahead while continuing to serve the needs of our community. Je remercie sincèrement.
I would like to to highlight all of the work done by the person of the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. And as I wait for the presentation load, I would say good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is my 12th budget at the City of Ottawa in different levels and capacity, but I can honestly say I think this is the first time that I've technically seen the actual budget be tabled. So I'm glad that the mayor, you actually tabled the budget this morning. I guess before I get started, I would like to say, here we are again. We're almost there, not quite there. I'll frame it in the context that we've made it to the finals. This is the final budget, final tabling of the budget for this term of council, but we got a bit more to go, a few more weeks to go to get through all the details. I'll be back here in about four weeks to kind of get to the final, final, final day, if you will. So before I kick it into the presentation, I would like to also introduce Svetlana Valkova. She's the Acting Deputy Chief Finance Officer. She'll join me today in presenting the table draft 2026 budget. I would also like to say thank you. Thank you to my colleagues, the boards, the departments, all finance staff, especially the small and mighty finance budgeting and planning team. There's an extensive amount of work that goes into that large document that you just seen tabled. A lot of nights, a lot of weekends, a lot of early mornings to bring this all together, especially after a long legislative agenda like we've had this year. And I want to also make a special shout out to the print shop. We do print these documents internally, staff in the print shop. I got an email Tuesday morning, 2:22 AM. Again, 2:22 AM is when they finished the first production run of the book, if you will. Believe it or not, yesterday, as we were doing our final, final review, we found two little minor things in one, in one report. That team was in here this morning with my finance team, making those adjustments to kind of get it right. So a big special thanks to, to all the teams that go through the details, the Q and A, and all the information that you had before you as we go through the budget process. As you will see today and over the next few weeks, the city continues to provide one of the most detailed and transparent budgets. I've spoken with this lots before, and we do, we do have one of the most detailed and transparent budgets. The amount of details is enormous, and we continue to take feedback and enhance those products as we move forward, and I'll speak to that later on in the presentation. But today, I'll take some time to highlight some of the key investments that this council's priorities have in this budget, and also highlight some of the key accomplishments over this term. We'll also provide an overview of the city's financial stewardship and how it affords us stability to invest in core services, maintain low debt levels, deliver long-term value to residents while ensuring fiscal sustainability. The city's significant savings through service reviews, efficiencies, continuous improvements, initiatives will be highlighted. Talk about how this has been allocated to continue to provide the services that residents need and expect, and how it aligns to our term of council priorities. And then I'll talk about the budget products in terms of the engagement opportunities that we have as we finalize the next, next steps of the budget process. Obviously, you can stay on that slide. So again, you've always heard me say, the budget is really a year-round process. It truly is. We're already looking into '27, '28, and forward-looking, so it really is a 365-day process. There are several elements and considerations that factor into the annual table draft budget. Staff monitor economic and market conditions such as inflation, interest rates, unemployment trends, consumer confidence, all which influence revenue forecasts, cost pressures, and investments of timing. The city continues to reaffirm its commitment to strong financial management and stewardship amid these ongoing economic challenges. We align the city's financial plans to ensure alignment with these principles. Budget priorities are shaped by council's strategic goals and internal council priorities. Further direction, information, and guidance is provided through the long-range financial plans and master plans. Departments conduct service reviews, identify operational efficiencies, line-by-line reviews on a monthly basis of their financials, define further opportunities. Savings are reinvested into core priority areas without offsetting or increasing taxes to residents. Residents and stakeholders provide input throughout the consultation process, online tools and surveys. Staff incorporate funding from provincial and federal levels of government, and there's, these are just a simple few of many of the different ways to help and shape the budget in achieving council's overall direction. Next slide, please. As I mentioned on previous slide, the economic and market conditions are a critical factor in our overall financial planning. As you would see throughout this year and into last year, this has become part of a normal update for me in my reports, on the quarterly reports, disposition report, directions, et cetera. This slide provides an overview of the economic conditions before us. Recently, the Bank of Canada recently reduced the rate to 2.25%, which is a further reduction from the June reduction. Latest Consumer Price Index, CPI, rolls to 2.4% on a year-over-year basis, which is up from 1.9 in August. Economic forecasts are expecting that to stabilize back to 2% going into 2026 and throughout 2026. Household spending and residential investments remain subdued to the weak labor market. Higher household savings and economic uncertainty. Housing market strain being more sensitive to economic cycles than general consumer spending. As the mayor referenced, and as we heard last week or two weeks ago, the federal government announced approximately a 40,000 job reduction. Many of that will be found and felt in our local economy. Ottawa lost 11,500 jobs in September, and the unemployment rate rose to 7.1%. Since then, a couple days ago, the latest numbers came in for October, unemployment rates are now at 7.4%. Consumer and business confidence is falling. There's ongoing challenges with disruptive trade flows, tariffs, and financial market volatility. Striking the right balance across all economic factors, including taxes, impacts to consumers, businesses, and residents, is an important consideration in managing the overall impacts to our residents and our local economy. Next slide, please. As I talked about before, we are guided by our fiscal framework. The goal of the fiscal framework is to ensure that the city's finances remain sound, sustainable, and that our financial, service, and infrastructure standards can be met without resorting to unplanned increases in rates or disruptive cuts to services. The foundation of our framework is set out on principles of responsible financial management, including respect for the taxpayer, prudent asset management, and prudent investment practices. These principles ensure the city lives within its means, within predictable tax levels, and the reserves provide flexibility to respond to economic cycles and manage financial risks, and that the city searches for excellence and value with due regard for economy, efficiency, and effectiveness. Next slide, please. Council's continued fiscal leadership and sustained commitment to fiscal prudence and financial sustainability continues to be a priority. This endorsement and guidance ensures financial stewardship and financial planning continues to be a core guiding principle throughout the organization. Over this term of council, a significant number of complex files, long-range financial plans, master plans, action plans, frameworks have all been updated and endorsed by council. These, these complex files continue to support council's priorities, inform areas of investments, generate savings, address key challenges, and support responsible financial management and the city's commitment to providing services and value to its residents. These files have had extensive consultation, engagement, and feedback from residents, industry, and our partners at all levels of government. These plans also ensure investments are affordable and align with long-term goals. Updates to things like the reserve management policy have strengthened financial discipline by helping us mitigate risks, support service continuity, and maintain flexibility. These accomplishments help balance frontline investments for a growing city without overburdening taxpayers. Next slide. The City of Ottawa continues its commitment towards financial management and full-time equivalent staffing management. This continued focus and commitment supported by council is part of the city's culture and embedded within all departments. It's essential as we continue to focus on delivering key and critical services to our residents every day. The organization has continued to manage growth and demand on frontline services while continuing to ensure a very lean administrative support structure. From 2018, forecasting up to 2046, the Ottawa projected increase of population is over 400,000 people, bringing our total close to 1.4 in 2046, with additional close to 600,000 private dwellings or households to be added. This growth continues, continues to put, place demands on all city services. The city has achieved improved efficiency in FTE management, while the number of households have grown significantly. The FTE per thousand households has decreased from 34.92 in 2010 down to below 30 at 29.86 in 2025. On the administrative side, the cost as a percentage of the total budget has decreased from 7% in 2016 to 4.8% today, which is a significant number, significant difference when you compare to industry standards that range anywhere from 15 to 25%. The city continues to absorb growth through service reviews, efficiencies, and continuous improvements. The vast majority of city growth in FTEs has been attributed to frontline services and legislative changes, with minimal growth in non-core operations to support emerging needs such as cybersecurity and legal support required for planning and development processes. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned by, by the mayor and Wendy, over this term, we've achieved $252.7 million in savings, which is equivalent to a 12% tax levy avoided, and it also represents a $531 savings per household. That's a cost that we did not pass on to the residents of Ottawa. This work is attributed to the Service Review Working Group and focused on identifying opportunities for savings and efficiencies to reinvest into strategic priorities for this term of council and ensuring value for money for the residents of Ottawa. Throughout the various budget documents, you will see several areas where we've highlighted significant savings and efficiencies. Each committee presentation will include details on efficiency and savings initiatives relevant to the committee. As part of the budget documentation, the transmittal report will outline each of these respective line items in terms of bringing it to the total of $44.9 million. Some of the highlights that you'll see in these documentation, additional fleet efficiencies, facilities efficiencies, discretionary spending efficiencies and savings, and a workforce management savings strategy. These are just some of the examples that result in the overall savings of $45 million in this 2026 draft budget. In addition, the city's approach to continuous improvement supported by the Agile Government Working Team has further identified several opportunities to streamline processes, leverage technology, automation, and AI to create organizational capacity and absorb growth without adding additional resources. Some examples: improving the service request process in Service Ottawa, implementation of a new permanent management system, LMS, automated work management process within road services, automation of a number of practices in the budget process, hydra optimization at water facilities, sand screening project, which brought excavating and screening internally, avoiding the costs of going externally, and removal barriers on city-owned land to accelerate housing. Again, more of these details can be found throughout the budget documentation. Next slide. The city's credit rating is an important factor in city's financials, including the ability to issue debt and access lower long-term borrowing costs for key investments. Moody's and S&amp;P use varying mythologies and analyze both financial and non-financial information to provide a neutral third-party assessment of the city's ability to meet its financial obligations. The agencies recognize the city's robust financial management, revenue growth, budgetary performance, current and projected debt levels, reserve balances, and our exceptional liquidity as a key factor in their overall rating. City carefully monitors its debt through the city's long-range financial plans to ensure ongoing financial well-being of the city is maintained in accordance with the fiscal framework and principles that I spoke about earlier. For 2025, we have maintained an exceptional credit rating at AAA and AA+. Next slide, please. The province limit is the total amount of debt that the municipality can issue at 25% of debt servicing as a percentage of its own source revenues. City's council-endorsed fiscal framework provides an additional layer of measure and guiding principles, which I'll speak on the next slide. The city has strict guidelines, policies, and procedures around debt and key principles that debt must not result in significant tax increases. The city has strict guidelines, policies and procedures around debt and key principles that debt must not result in significant tax increases and the total amount of debt must not compromise the city's credit ratings. The result of this work include a low debt servicing to property tax ratios, a low debt to asset ratio, which places the organization in a favorable position to pay its debt obligations. Next slide. As I previously, as I mentioned on the previous slide, the provincial limits the total amount of debt that a municipality can issue at twenty five percent of its own source revenues. The city's council endorsed fiscal framework provides an additional layer of measure and guiding principles, which reduces that level to seven point five percent, which is significantly below the provincial threshold of twenty five percent. As you can see from the graph on the slide, we are significantly below that, running consistently below five percent and projected to be in three point seven percent for twenty twenty six. Next slide. On this slide, this is the corresponding rate debt servicing slide, side. The city is also well below the provincial limit of twenty five percent. This council has endorsed a, a limit on the debt servicing for rate program at fifteen percent and we're currently below twelve percent, eleven point seven. Next slide. So we put those things in a perspective, in twenty twenty four, the city's long term debt represents about ten point eight percent of the value of the city's total tangible capital assets. And what that translates into for the average homeowner, that's equivalent to a forty five thousand dollar mortgage on an average assessed home of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Next slide. The tax stabilization reserve is another critical component of the overall health of the city's finances. As prescribed by the fiscal framework, surpluses each year are brought forward to the following year as revenue allocated to a tax stabilization reserve. Due to the strong financial management practices, the city's tax stabilization reserve has seen significant growth from approximately five point five million in twenty fourteen to approximately one hundred and forty million as of October. Tax stabilization reserve is leveraged to maintain stable tax rates, reduce, eliminate any operating deficits of the city of Ottawa as approved by council and for financing one time operating budget expenditures, once again, as approved by council. Over the same timeframe, overall, the total reserve balance has increased from two hundred and fourteen million in twenty thirteen to approximately five hundred and forty million projected at the end of twenty twenty six, which is effectively flatlined to twenty twenty five levels. Next slide, please. So overall, our strong financial management is summarized on this slide. All these items contribute to the overall success of the organization and its finances. The draft twenty twenty six budget leans on the fiscal framework and demonstrates the responsibility to the community. It serves by continuing to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayer, building on the stability achieved, sustaining investments in essential services that residents rely on, facing challenges from aging infrastructure, climate change, funding security, while balancing affordability with a prudent approach to benefit the community into the long term horizon and continued commitment and discipline in municipal spending. Next slide. The draft twenty twenty six operating capital budget adheres to council's direction of setting a municipal tax increase of no more than three point seven five percent. This table breaks down the increase and now relates to citywide services. Citywide service levy. So again, we have three levies, the citywide levy, auto police levy and a transit levy. Overall, the citywide levy is increasing by two percent. Within that OPS, sorry, OPL, OPH and OAG were allocated a two point nine percent, nine percent allocation. OPS at five percent and transit at eight percent with a two point five percent fare increase. Combined together, maintaining the overall council approved direction of three point seven five percent. Solid waste increase of ten percent aligned to the solid waste master plan and long range financial plan. And the overall rate program increase of four point five percent, which aligns to the most updated rate RFP which approved earlier this year. Next slide. So leaning on the principles of the fiscal framework and guidance from council, the achievement of our financial prudence is passed on to the taxpayer. The overall impact to the average urban homeowner combined is two hundred and thirty seven dollars. And from a real perspective, the overall average impact is a hundred and twenty six dollars. Next slide. So as a reminder, and unlike other levels of government, the city cannot budget for deficits where required by legislation to present a balanced budget. All expenditures must have offsetting revenue sources to equate to expenditures equals revenues, which is a balanced budget. This slide shows where all the operating money is allocated. And I'll highlight a few things. Community social services represents twenty three point four percent of the total operating budget and receives the majority of its funding from the province and federal government for things like childcare services, employment services and long term care. Transit is the next bud, uh, next largest budget, representing seventeen point three percent of the overall net operating budget, water, sewer, solid waste, which are funded from Rome respective revenues reflected twelve point six increase. And once again, the city's general government primarily enterprise administrative type functions makes up approximately four point eight percent. And as I mentioned earlier, this is a reduction of seven percent that was in twenty sixteen. Next slide. The twenty twenty six capital budget makes key investments in critical services and council priorities across the city, including roads, transit, water, infrastructure and recreational facilities. The overall rate program continues to be one of the largest capital intensive programs, given the nature of infrastructure required to this program. The twenty twenty six capital budget is in alignment with the most recent updated approved rate RFP. The city continues to invest significantly in renewal of our existing assets, which continues to be a focus on maintaining our core infrastructure with nine hundred and forty seven million being allocated towards renewal projects and programs. The draft twenty twenty six capital budget also includes significant investments in growth assets such as Riverside South recreational complex, carp road widening, Green Bank realignment, Brian Cobert widening and the Sitzville Main Street extension, all which are aligned to the twenty twenty four DC background and the most recent TNP that was recently adopted earlier this year. Uh, next slide, and I'll now pass over to Svetlana.
As the outset, we set the priorities for the year. We want to make Ottawa a city with affordable housing and is more livable for all. To do so, we invest in housing, in recreation and culture, concretely in twenty twenty six. We, we foresee forty eight million dollar over four years for a new homelessness prevention program. That's over four years, thanks to the new provincial program. We will dedicate a little over twenty three million dollar in twenty twenty six. So that's about a hundred and five million for affordable housing. To reduce childcare fees and support workforce compensation, we will invest sixty million dollar in twenty twenty six for a total of three hundred and forty three million over four years. We also have two hundred and sixty one million in twenty twenty six for investment in development and expansion of facilities and about thirty nine million dollar for the improvement of parks and creation of new parks. And we will support culture with twelve and a half million per year. So forty nine, uh, forty nine million for cultural organization and public programming. The second priority sector of this mandate is to think about our diversified economy and prosperous economy. These investments will support public safety, a better public spaces, economic growth and cultural community. In twenty twenty six, we, we will spend sixteen million dollar for public safety. That is thirty two million dollar over the mandate, over the term. We will dedicate about two million dollar in twenty twenty six for a total of almost nineteen million to, uh, construct a phased implementation of William Street and Byward Market Square, street caping project. As per the public realm plan, now to support economic growth, we will invest about four million dollar in twenty twenty six. So about eighteen million dollar over the term, the four year term to support the work to of Invest Ottawa. We will also support our cultural industry with six hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty six for million, for a total of two point four million dollar to support the Ottawa Film Office and the Ottawa Music Industry Coalition. And finally, a one time funding of one million point, one point nine million to deliver the two hundredth anniversary celebration for the Bytown and the Byward Market. These initiatives reinforce the security of our public spaces and help a strong local economy. Next slide. The third priority is to create a more connected city with reliable, safe and accessible mobility option. To reach that objective, we made some major investments in mobility. In twenty twenty six, we have three million dollars for enhanced winter operation, that is fifteen point seven million dollar over the term of the, over our term. And then a hundred and thirty five million dollar for roads resurfacing in twenty twenty six for a total of five hundred and thirty two point seven million resurfacing and rehabilitation. And now to renew or replace the OC transport fleet, we will invest almost forty eight million dollar in twenty twenty six, that is for a total of one point seven, seventeen billion dollar over four years. And finally, we invest almost sixty million dollar in twenty twenty six for a total of a hundred and fourteen million in standalone investments for new pedestrian and cycling infrastructure. This decision will ensure reliability and stability in the transport, transportation. Next slide. The fourth priority of this term is to create a green and resilient city. So we will invest in zero emission buses to promote energy conservation in twenty twenty six. We will spend two million dollar on the purchase of zero emission buses for a total investment of nine hundred, nine hundred and seventy eight million dollar. We will dedicate eighty seven million dollar in twenty twenty six. So that is three hundred and fifty nine point one million over four years for upgrades to the Robert O. Pickard Environmental Center. Now for energy management and investment strategy, we'll invest almost three million dollar in twenty twenty six for a total of almost twelve million dollar. We will also reserve one point four million dollar for replacement of safety facility and specialty fire equipment. And two point three million dollar for tree planting. Finally, we will invest nine million dollars in, in twenty twenty six for a total of twenty five million to, for the climate change master plan. These initiatives are essential to reduce our carbon footprint and build a resilient and green city. Next slide. The public engagement is essential in this process. It facilitates discussions on the use of public funds all along the year. Residents have many ways to give their opinion and make comments. In the budget development, we took into account the residents' comments that were provided to council all, all along the year. And we talked about the finance, long term financial plan. And that gives precious information for staff. This year, the public consultation on the budget started in April and are still going on in November. On, from May twenty sixth to the thirtieth of June, there was a public consultation. And the budget priorities were presented from November twelfth to December eighth. Residents and community partners can submit their questions and comments on the twenty twenty six budget. To remain informed, residents can follow us on Facebook and X and interact with us on social networks. To make the budget process clearer, we produce a, a video explaining how to participate in the development of the budget. This year, we have, um, podcasts that presents a simplified version of the budget.
Thank you, Svetlana. And just, just a little point of clarification, if, if you did miss it in the previous four slides, when we talk about, there was a number, there was a number in brackets. The number is the twenty twenty six draft budget and in the brackets is the total term of council. We felt it was important to highlight that because really this term of council, the term council priorities are kind of a unique process. So every, every budget that we've tabled, I've been showing it kind of that way to show the cumulative amount as opposed and in addition to the in year budget, if you will. Uh, thank you, Svetlana. So continuing on with the, the, the presentation. Uh, this, again, as I've said many, many times, we do have one of the most transparent and detailed budgets. I say that, uh, I can say that with confidence, Bloomberg, that were engagement. Uh, they did a review on our budget last year as we were trying to see if there's other ways we can further enhance it. And they came back with their independent review stating that our budget was one of the most detailed, uh, and transparent budgets that they've encountered across North America, not only within Canada. CDL, uh, they're an annual agency that releases, uh, budget rankings, if you will. Uh, earlier this year, we got a ranking and I think it was A or B plus, I can't recall off the top of my head. But again, these are, you know, non biased, third party type, uh, opinions on our budget, much more than, than what I say. Uh, again, as I talked about, the level of detail is robust. We continue to provide departmental and service area operating budgets right down to the program level for expenditures and funding sources. We also provide the previous year's actuals for trend and comparisons. Uh, we've, we've introduced a number of new products, uh, this term of council, which provide further details on the budget allocation across the more than a hundred plus services in the city. On the capital side, uh, we provide project and program level details. Uh, once you go through documentation, the details, you'll see over five hundred new, uh, projects in this budget, consistent in previous budgets. Every project's got a narrative, which kind of outlines the, the description and the details of those investments. Uh, when you go into the roads resurfacing type budget, you'll see down to the, the actual roads and awards where those investments are planned to occur. And further to that, we also include the over seventeen hundred plus, uh, capital projects that are ongoing in our capital whip, whip report. That's a report that I bring forward as part of my quarterly reports. And again, we, we provide that as well in the level of detail by committee, uh, in the budget book. Uh, in addition, uh, you've heard me talk about this product right here as I deemed the budget magazine. Uh, this year, I, I gotta have a special shout out to the team. Uh, and there's a new section there that we talk about the day of life in, in the city of Ottawa as a resident. I think it's really cool. It really kind of portrays, you know, from the time you wake up in the morning to the time you go to bed at night, all the services that you do touch. I would encourage you to ensure that you have these copies of these magazines in your ward offices. Uh, it's a way that we kind of make it more user friendly. Uh, often I get asked when I'm out to the ward consultations, you know, what do we do with all this feedback? I think this is a core example of feedback that I get in terms of making the budget more digestible and simple. Uh, so again, if you do need more copies, uh, reach out to me and we'll be sure to, uh, get those out to your offices. In addition, uh, last year, uh, we moved and enhanced all the documentation online. Uh, we created some new tools online, it's fully accessible. Uh, you can download, uh, the budget, the details, pivot, play with it, maneuver it. Uh, in addition to that, we also have all of our actuals on open data. So all the information is there. Uh, sometimes I, I've made the comment before that it's, it's so detailed that we, we made it more complex because of the level of detail. Sometimes it's hard to navigate, but it's all there and I'm always here to help if you're having struggles with that. Uh, next slide, please. And lastly, uh, so again, as I stated, this is kind of the next step in the process. As I, as I stated before, it really is a three hundred and sixty five day process at the city of Ottawa. formally guided by a directions report in September. Here we are today with the tabling. And now we're in for the little bit of a four-week cycle where we have all the committee meetings. The committee meetings will have much more detail. The products will be released a little bit later this morning. In addition, I do also want to highlight, you will also receive a detailed file, word by word. It's a product that is traditionally not part of the formal budget process. Not really is either today, but the finance team and the Pimmer team have worked closely with all departments to kind of create another level of detail. That information will be shared with each of you respectively. And then between finance and Pimmer, we're here to help in terms of dissect that or pull key information that you might want to use for your residents. And as you talk about the budget in the next few weeks. And again, I'm always available to provide support. Mr. Mayor, that kind of concludes my presentation. And we'll take questions after the boards present their budgets.
Thank you, Cyril. And thank you for the many, many months of hard work that went into this budget through you and your team. Thank you for all the great work and collaboration. And again, I want to underscore, you know, how happy I am that we're in such a strong financial position as a city. And that's thanks to your leadership and Wendy's leadership. We're lucky to have not just you at the helm, but a former treasurer as our city manager. So that gives me a lot of confidence. So as Cyril mentioned, we'll hold questions on that presentation until after we hear the other presentations. And reminder that we are only tabling the budget today, so only high-level questions on the presentation or related to process and procedure will be in order today. We will be handling detailed questions and debate at committees and at the council meeting on December the 10th. So we will move next to Committee of Adjustment. There is no presentation necessary for this one. Is everybody okay just to receive that and table it? Is that carried? Okay, thank you. And we will go next to the Ottawa Board of Health. We do have a presentation on that. Councillor Kitz, as Chair, is going to move to another spot. And I'm going to provide play-by-play of that while she walks over. Welcome, Dr. Arnison. Over to you, Councillor Kitz.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, colleagues, and members of the senior leadership team. I'm joined today by Dr. Trevor Arnison, our Medical Officer of Health, and by Mohamed Kibria, OPH's Manager of Policy, Indigenous Health, and Business Admin Support, as we table the 2026 operating budget for the Ottawa Board of Health. Ottawa Public Health has worked closely with the city's corporate financial planning team to finalize this budget, which reflects both our commitment to public health and the fiscal realities we face, both at the provincial and municipal level.
This reflects the priority established from 2023 to 2025. The purpose of this plan is to see that Health Ottawa can cooperate with other departments in order to protect the health of all the residents of Ottawa.
This slide provides a snapshot of OPH's 2026 operating budget. The total budget pressure for 2026 is $4 million, driven primarily by cost-of-living adjustments to compensation and benefits, inflationary increases to non-compensation operating expenses. OPH's gross operating expenses are projected at $88.5 million, supporting 511.11 full-time equivalent positions. As I shared during our budget directions debate, OPH's FTE count has only grown 1% in the last 14 years, despite a population increase of 19% in the same timeframe. To address these pressures, OPH has implemented several temporary measures: increased staff gapping, identified $365,000 in efficiencies, secured $370,000 from partners, planned a $605,000 withdrawal from the IT reserve.
This shows our commitment to maintain the quality of service while managing responsibly.
This slide outlines OPH's expenditures across key program areas. Cost-sharing core programs at $72.94 million, an increase of $2.1 million over last year. Ontario Senior Dental Care Program, $3.26 million. Healthy Babies Healthy Children Program, $5.47 million. City-funded programs, $4.94 million, a slight decrease of $73,000. Miscellaneous programs, $1.89 million. These figures demonstrate our focus on sustaining essential services while responding to inflationary pressures. Next slide, please. OPH's projected revenues for 2026 total $53.7 million. Source from: Ministry of Health, $45.34 million. Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services, $5.46 million. Fees and services, $1.89 million. IT reserve withdrawal, $605,000. And partner transfers at $370,000. Next slide, please. To balance the budget, OPH requires a net contribution of $32.1 million from the city of Ottawa. The increase aligns with the council's direction on the 2.9% plus-growth municipal tax levy and reflects the growing demand for public health services. Next slide, please. Despite our financial pressures, OPH has been able to innovate and increase its outreach and services to Ottawa residents and our partners. With this budget, OPH has been able to expand services: the opening and operation of a new dental clinic in Orleans. Earlier this fall, OPH opened a new dental clinic in Orleans. This is the fourth OPH-run dental clinic in Ottawa. It provides preventative and emergency dental care services to residents who are enrolled in a variety of social programs, including Healthy Smiles Ontario, the Ontario Senior Dental Plan, and the Canadian Care Plan. I'm excited to be bringing Marisa Cliff on a tour of this clinic later this week. In addition to the new dental clinic and as part of OPH's commitment to Indigenous health and reconciliation, OPH launched a dedicated Indigenous health rights and reconciliations branch. This branch works to support city and community partners in delivering public health services to the Indigenous community in Ottawa. Next slide, please.
OPH will serve the public.
This expansion to OPH's cloud-based EMR system will improve public health practice management tools and strengthen our service delivery and patient engagement. This budget also allows us to sustain integrated services through our 10 neighborhood community wellness hubs. These hubs are a true success story and an embodiment of the Team Ottawa approach we so often talk about. In collaboration with city departments and other community partners, OPH offers free drop-in services for individuals facing barriers in accessing basic health services. This includes vaccination, dental screenings, diabetes screenings, aging well programs, and parenting in Ottawa services. This budget also allows us to maintain our core services, including immunizing over 66,000 children and youth, providing dental care to 7,000 residents, conducting 8,000 home visits through the Healthy Babies Healthy Children Program, inspecting over 5,500 food premises, treating 100,000 catch basins for mosquito control, investigating and managing 7,000 infectious disease cases. These are not just numbers. They represent real people, real programs, and real impact. Next slide, please. Despite our efforts, OPH continues to face a structural funding gap. The Ministry of Health consistently funds less than 75% of cost-shared programs. Annual increases of 1% do not keep pace with the 3% to 4% growth in operating costs. This gap has widened over time, from 62% provincial share in 2023 to a projected 56% in 2026, despite no expansion in mandated services. The province has begun a process to review its funding formula for public health units. We have made it clear to the Minister of Health that the current funding structure is not sustainable and that the inequities between public health units must be addressed. As everyone around this table knows, Ottawa is a unique city with its own distinct challenges and opportunities. Ottawa Public Health sees this every day. People come from all over the world to live, work, and play here. Our population has grown at an incredible rate over the last 15 years, and our mix of rural, suburban, and urban communities is unlike any other in Ontario. Through the mayor's leadership, the province has recognized Ottawa's uniqueness and importance through the New Ottawa deal. Building on that momentum, my colleagues on the Board of Health and I will continue to work diligently to ensure that the same recognition is reflected in how public health is funded fairly, sustainably, and in a way that meets the need of all of our residents. Next slide, please. In closing, I want to emphasize that this budget is more than a financial document. It's a reflection of OPH's values, health equity, and resilience. It's built with discipline, compassion, and purpose, and it stands on trust.
Public Health Ottawa was able to offer the residents of Ottawa a surface that we can be all proud of.
For members and Team OPH, thank you for your leadership and your unwavering commitment to keeping Ottawa healthy, strong, and livable. Malsi Migwetj, thank you. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Councillor Kitz, for that excellent presentation. Are there any questions? Councillor Brockington?
Just one, Mayor. And I was just wondering if Chair Kitz, as well as Chair Lulaf and the police, once they get to their delegations, can just remind members of council the date of your meeting where you could receive delegations from councillors? Thank you.
It's December 1st. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. So the Ottawa Board of Health recommendation is to receive and table the draft operating budget. Is that carried? We will move next to the Ottawa Public Library Board. And Councillor Lulaf will not have to move at all.
One of the many privileges of being the councillor for Ward 1, I suppose. Colleagues, as Chair of the Ottawa Public Library Board, I'm honored to join staff to present to you the library's draft budget for 2026. I'm joined today by Sonia Bevington, our Chief Librarian and CEO, as well as our Deputy CEO and Abc. Lee. Staff have designed a budget that meets OPL's requirements for 2026, which advances several of the board's priorities, including but not limited to the beginning of the process of increasing Sunday hours, secured through the excellent work of our collective bargaining team and in collaboration with our union. Closing gaps is directed by our facility framework and continuing our work defending intellectual freedom. On behalf of the library board, I confirm what staff will present to you this morning reflects the requirements of the upcoming year. When I spoke to you last year and the year before, I warned that OPL would not meet budget directions this year, given the increase to our A base funding required to operate and open Otisoke. To be clear, we would be able to meet these directions if not for the complement of staff required to be onboarded and trained in preparation for the opening of our new central branch. And the careful and mindful financial stewardship of OPL staff like Anna, Sonia, Matt Pritz and his team are to be commended. This is a necessary investment in the last truly barrier-free democratic space in our city. And the hiring in preparation of the opening of Otisoke will allow us to begin to deliver on expanded hours at some branches, as often requested by many of you around this table and online. Staff have found financial strategies to reduce the overall tax burden on residents. To achieve this, they've dedicated a portion of the council-directed increase to support the central branch at Otisoke, our city's most significant cultural and community investment. And I want to thank Cyril and his team for their collaboration and their work. I understand the need to separate ongoing operations from future growth and appreciate the strategies that you've come up with alongside our team to achieve that today. The library board is pleased with the work that's been done. And I'll turn it over to OPL CEO Sonia Bevington to present the details. Thank you. Oh, and December 2nd, Councillor Brockington.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Bonjour, Monsieur le Maire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very pleased to be here this morning to present to you the draft budget 2026 of the public library.
As we bring online the new central branch, I will highlight the operating requirements in two parts: the first for regular operations and the second for central branch-specific operations. I'll then move on to identify the capital requirements. And these three elements combined comprise the total of OPL's budget request.
Since 2026 will be a unique year with the opening of the central library, we will talk about the operating needs in two elements regarding the activities of that central branch. Then we will talk about the capital needs. And this represents the whole budget of the public library.
Almost one quarter of Ottawa's population of over 1 million residents are active clients of the services that we provide.
We are the most important public library network that is bilingual in North America and the only municipal network that is officially bilingual in Canada.
Collections, expertise, programs, spaces, and tools, spanning the vast geography of our city and served through three different channels. Libraries generate measurable economic impact from supporting local businesses and workforce development to attracting visitors and strengthening neighborhood vitality. Using 2024 figures to update an economic benefit report initially produced in 2016, for every dollar invested in OPL, there is more than $4 in value realized. And libraries offer intangible benefits that enrich community life, fostering social connection, intellectual growth, creative inspiration, and emotional wellbeing. We are grateful to receive the majority of our funding from the city of Ottawa with OPL's budget representing approximately 1.4% of the total city budget. In September, Ottawa City Council directed the library board to present a budget for 2026 based on prorated share of tax increase and estimated assessment growth. Combined, these represent an increase of $2.9 million.
This represents a $2.9 million increase for 2026.
Staff were asked as well to identify efficiencies. Throughout this term of board, more than 1 million has been found to date. In 2025, we've continued our efforts to identify internal efficiencies of a more modest amount. And this has been taken into account as we prepare the financial requirements for 2026. And all of those details can be found in the staff report.
Next slide, please, for the...
The chair mentioned that OPL's requirements for 2026 reflect the board's priorities and our strategic directions. And these include ensuring that collections keep pace with client demand, cost increases and growth, expanding hours of operation to include Sundays year-round at the existing service points, establishing a branch to serve the old Hunt Club community, a legacy gap among our service points identified in the facilities master plan, which was approved by our board earlier this fall, and funding for operational requirements for the central branch at Otisoke. So moving to Part 1 of our budget on the next slide, we are identifying the operational funding requirements associated with current regular operations.
As we've seen in the previous year, compensation is the main budget item.
You will see the compensation represents the majority of requirements for 2026. And this will continue to be the case as the organization expands. In addition to other mandatory expenses for facility maintenance, insurance premiums, and licensing and maintenance, the 2026 operating requirements within Part 1 include the following: $500,000 for the development of library collections, approximately $400,000 to enhance services in a number of capacities, including offering hours of operation on Sundays throughout the summer. And this expands our Sunday hour offering to be year-round. This is our first for OPL. And finally, an estimated sum for a lease at the recently-approved Hunt Club facility as I have referred to. We expect to bring a lease to the board in the new year. These activities total more than $4 million with an addition of four new FTE. With a reduction to the capital program and other financial adjustments, the net requirement for 2026 is $1.66 million. This is well within the $2.9 million of city council direction. I'll now move on to Part 2 of the operating requirements, funding specifically for central branch.
In Part 2 of the operating requirements, this includes the Otisoke budget.
You'll recall that in the 2025 budget, council approved 54 new positions, with the majority of those funded for 1/6 of the year. Compensation costs specific to central represent funding for the remaining 5/6. Compensation costs specific to central represent funding for the remaining 5/6 of the year and adjusted to reflect 2026 rates of pay. Recruitment for these positions is underway and the current labour market is favourable for our efforts. In addition, there is a request for an additional eight FTE and this largely concludes the funding requirements for the staffing model as approved by the board.
Compensation will be compensated by a pension of $850,000 from the reserve.
... by a draw on our reserves of 850,000. These are monies that had been previously held for this purpose. Facility-related charges, both for compensation and utilities overhead, represent an additional 2.5 million. And the remaining 350,000 is primarily for programmes and event services of the first year of operation. Next slide, please. To summarise, part one represents 1.66 million and part two nets out to 6.098 million for a total operating requirement of 7.758 in 2026. Recognising that the council direction is an increase of 2.9 million, we have determined that 20% of the new central branch requirements can be addressed within that direction with additional revenues required of 4.858 million to balance the full requirement. Next slide, please. Moving on to the capital allocation. In 2026,
We will be financing the full library's needs through three funds. We're going to have the use of the library reserves for the Hunt Club. We will have the development charges as well as the city-funded programmes such as accessibility and energy.
... used to fund annual facility and technology upgrades as well as transit bins. It will be used to advance OPL's strategic initiatives, specifically initial funding for merchandise inventory for retail services at Central and fit-up for the new Hunt Club branch. From the library development charge reserve, staff recommend funding for library materials. And rounding up the capital allocation is funding from the city for lifecycle accessibility and energy projects. Details on specific projects within these categories can be found in the budget documents. I note that the recommended approach to funding capital will see a significant withdrawal from the library reserve. This reduces the burden on tax-based funding.
The approach recommended for capital allocation will use a good part of the reserves. This will reduce the contribution of the taxpayers.
Additional details are in the complete budget book and staff report. And these include the user fees, where you'll note a 2.95% increase consistent with rates for city services, as well as the four-year capital plan and a four-year operating forecast, as well as details on the status of the library reserve and the library DC reserve.
All the details are in the appendix as well as in the report of the main report. In this budget, we want to be very cautious. We're taking into account of the diverse needs of 2026.
... maintains current operations within council-directed funding. It supports asset maintenance and includes a new branch for old Hunt Club. It enhances client experience through increased collections funding and expanded Sunday hours. It builds staff capacity for current services and central branch at Atosokee operations. And it strengthens financial stewardship through efficiencies and fair user fee updates. Donc merci, Chair.
Thank you so much.
... council. We welcome the questions of clarification.
Thank you, Sonia. As you can see, the OPL continues to be excellent stewards of public funds while delivering more and better programming absolutely free to the community. There's no comparison between what OPL offers to other offerings to the city of Ottawa. And I want to thank councillors King, Bradley and Kits for their continued work on the OPL board. You strengthen the work that we do and your stewardship is very appreciated, as well as the continued collaboration with our city staff and staff at the OPL. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the chief librarian. Thank you to the chair. Are there any questions? Okay, so the recommendation is that we receive and table the Ottawa Public Library Board 2026 draft operating and capital budget. Is that carried? Thank you. We will move next to the Police Service Board 2026 draft operating and capital budget. Welcome Chair Facharani, Chief Stubbs, Deputy Chief Bell. You have to turn your mic on, Selim. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Sutcliffe and council members. On behalf of the Ottawa Police Service Board, I'm privileged to be here today with Chief Stubbs and Deputy Chief Bell to present the 2026 draft operating and capital budget for the Ottawa Police Service. The draft budget follows the expectations to balance pressing needs we heard from the community with fiscal responsibility. As a courtesy and as a context for members of the public who may not be aware, I think it's important to start with a few remarks about the police board responsibilities and why they matter to residents. Civilian oversight is a cornerstone of modern democratic policing, ensuring that police services are accountable not only under the law, but to the communities they serve. As you know, the Ottawa Police Service Board provides independent, impartial civilian oversight to the Ottawa Police Service. Through the board's residents, through the board, residents have direct voice in setting priorities, allocating resources and upholding the values of transparency, fairness and public trust. The police budget must reflect those principles, balancing community safety, fiscal responsibility and the need to support the members of the service who serve our city every day. Following from these principles, the Community Safety and Policing Act establishes the board's responsibility to ensure adequate and effective policing in Ottawa and the city's responsibilities to provide the necessary funding. What we heard consistently from residents is that adequate and effective policing in Ottawa means equitable policing. It is central to the priorities and objectives in the board's strategic plan for 2024 to 2027. A one-size-fits-all model is not adequate for a geographically and socially diverse city like ours. To truly meet the standards set by the act, policing must be equipped to address differences in both places and people. It requires a commitment to geographic equity, ensuring that each area of the city, whether rural, suburban or urban, receives the policing that reflects its unique safety concerns and service demands. It also requires a commitment to intersectional equity, recognising that different groups may experience policing differently because of factors like race, culture, income, gender or mental health. And that policies and practices should be designed to reduce those disparities, not reinforce them. It means that ensuring that all individuals and communities are treated fairly with respect and according to their specific needs and circumstances, particularly for those who have historically been underserved or overpoliced. This dual commitment forms the foundation of the board's approach. Policing in Ottawa must be effective, fair and responsive overall and at both the neighbourhood and individual levels. To advance this vision, the board recognises that the district revitalisation programme is essential. It is the mechanism through which the service is modernising its structure, culture and systems to better align resources with local needs and community expectations. It operationalises the board's priorities on equity, adaptiveness, community responsiveness and accountability. For these reasons, the board sees the effective rollout of the district model as essential, both to meeting our legislative obligations under the act and to fulfilling public expectations for a modern, effective and equitable police service. This model is central to our budget direction and forms a key part of the strategy to respond to what residents have told us are their priorities. They want police to focus on violent crime, use less force and provide more help to those who are vulnerable. They've identified priorities that include preventing gun violence, improving de-escalation and use of force training and strengthening a mental health response and support. Residents also want the OPS to focus on most serious threats to safety: violence against women and intimate partners, sexual assaults, drug use and overdoses, repeat offenders, human trafficking and child exploitation. Traffic safety and rising property crimes are also serious concerns. Across the city, people are asking for more community policing, more visible presence and stronger prevention programmes. At the same time, we're hearing growing concerns about slower response times and the service's capacity to meet increasing demands and rising crime rates. Underlying all of this, residents continue to call for a police service that treats everyone fairly and reflects equity as the core value in interaction. Alongside the overall findings, opinions and priorities differ across neighbourhoods and groups. I encourage councillors and the public to review the budget consultations report, including recent survey data that includes analysis by Ward and other demographics. I wanted to set out this context before handing the presentation over to Chief Stubbs and Deputy Chief Bell for more details. I'll conclude by saying that the board and services respect the complex decisions council must make for the 2026 budget as it works to balance many priorities and respond to community needs. Effective policing is strengthened when we all work together. The budget tabled by the service to the board this morning follows the Ottawa Police Service Board's direction. We gave direction to the police service to develop a budget with an increase of no more than 6.5% over last year's funding from the municipality plus the estimated 1.6% tax assessment growth. The board also directed the OPS to develop an efficiency plan and multi-year financial plan starting in 2026. The board now will review the budget in detail and is seeking community feedback at our upcoming Finance and Audit Committee meeting on November 21st. This is an opportunity to delegate and I would encourage those interested to do so. I would also like to acknowledge Chief Stubbs, Deputy Chief Bell and their team for all their excellent work and collaboration throughout the year to develop the draft budget. In finalising the draft budget, the service has worked with the city staff on the mechanics of the funding. I would also like to thank city staff for this. I will now ask the service to speak to the details as well as their resource allocation process, internal efficiencies and additional revenue streams. I will now turn it over to Chief Stubbs.
Thank you, Chair Facharani. Good morning, mayor and members of council. I'm pleased to be here today with the chair and deputy chief Bell to present the Ottawa Police Service 2026 draft operating and capital budget.
Hello, everyone. Councillor, Mr. Mayor. It's a real pleasure to be with the president as well as the deputy chief to present you the draft operating capital budget 2026.
As in previous years, the draft budget was developed in alignment with the board's strategic direction and informed by extensive consultation with community members and interest holders, operational insights, crime data and ongoing dialogue with city of Ottawa staff. It reflects the evolving safety needs of Ottawa's residents and businesses, the operational realities facing the Ottawa Police Service and the fiscal pressures currently affecting our municipality. We look forward to discussing the draft budget with members of the board, council and the public throughout the consultation process over the coming weeks.
We will be happy to discuss the draft budget with the public, the consultation, as we will go along with consultation over the next few weeks.
Before we talk financials, I want to draw attention to some operational data we have referenced when building our budget and when prioritising our activities in 2026. I do want to note, we chose to use the time period of 10 years, 2015 to 2024 versus just the previous year to illustrate the significant changes in our work and within our community.
Our population keeps on growing and is more diversified throughout the city.
In addition to some other factors, has resulted in our workload increasing. Notably, the overall trend is that we are continuing to see an increase in both the volume of calls for service and the time spent responding to them during, again, this 10-year period of 2015 to 2024, though we are seeing a slight decrease in calls in 2025. This trend helps us explain the decline in response times for priority two to four calls, an area we are committed to improving. But this isn't surprising. An increase in call volume naturally leads to more time spent on calls, which in turn affects response times. Improving this situation is essential to enhance our service levels for the community. Next slide, please. As far as crime stats go, criminal code of Canada offences continue to increase in 2024, up 63% over the last 10 years or since 2015. Violent crimes, including homicides, assaults, sexual violence and uttering threats, were up 58% in 2024 relative to 2015. That's about 8,200 offences. An increase in non-violent crime were primarily driven by a 384% increase in shoplifting in 2024 compared to 2015 and 113% increase in auto theft, though that situation is improving. On the positive side, acts of mischief are down during this time period. These examples reflect broader shifts in crime patterns that have intensified in recent years post-COVID. And after much population growth and change, underscoring the challenges faced by the OPS and tackling both violent and property crimes citywide. Our team is actively implementing a range of strategies to respond to these evolving trends. Next slide, please. While some of the figures presented are concerning, we believe the 2026 OPS draft budget will help to equip the service to manage the rising and evolving workload while also positioning us to better respond to community concerns. This draft budget is aligned with the board's direction, as the chair mentioned, of a tax increase between 2.9% and 6.5% and aligns with the board's strategic plan and community feedback. Some highlights include the district policing model. As we've discussed for a number of years, this tailored model of policing will address the unique needs of urban, suburban and rural areas. This model will improve community relationships and service, enhance community policing and improve trust and confidence. The district model will continue to roll out iteratively in 2026 with the full model that includes the frontline scheduled for January 2027. The third year of our three-year staff stabilisation strategy will continue to offer stabilisation and growth in staffing to address critical gaps in key areas like our district project, traffic enforcement and a number of investigative sections like intimate partner violence and fraud. In 2026, the service will create 25 growth positions critical for the continued modernisation of the police service. We also have funding to address compensation and benefit impacts resulting from the negotiated collective bargaining agreements with the Ottawa Police Association and the Senior Officers' Association for 2026. Our facility strategic plan will continue to deliver on commitments through the advancement of the south facility project and assessing the feasibility of a new training centre to address the lost training space at Algonquin College. And finally, finally, this past Monday, we started our pilot of the body-worn cameras, which are primarily being deployed to members on the crisis intervention team. In the past few years, the OPS has worked with its partners in the federal and provincial governments to secure additional funding for new and fully funded services that contribute to community safety. These services largely all became operational in 2025 and they include the Parliamentary Precinct, which has been operational for about a year. We have the Alternative Staffing Constable Initiative, which is funding that has been provided so we can create new special constable positions in areas like fraud, cybercrime and in our forensic ident area. These positions support sworn officers and allow them to focus more on their primary policing functions. We've got funding for our Community Outreach and Response and Engagement Strategy, better known as CORE, which is focused in the Byward market. Finally, funding has allowed for the development of a new mounted unit that will assist with demonstrations, increase police visibility in the urban areas, and assist with search operations. And still to come is our new helicopter, which will begin operations in 2026. We continue to have a lot of change management underway, a lot of key projects and initiatives. We look forward to continuing the movement of these items forward and feel that the 2026 budget, as it is drafted, will allow us to do so.
We think that we will be able to move forward on these initiatives and projects in 2026. This draft budget will allow us to do so.
Thank you very much Chief. Can I get you advanced one slide, please? Yeah, and I think we're one behind. If you can go one more ahead, please. Thank you. Thank you Chief and good morning, everyone. The 2026 budget proposal aligns with the Board's direction to prepare the 2026 Draft Operating in Capital Budget based on between 2.9 and 6.5% police tax levy, proposing a 5% police tax levy and the prorated share of the 1.6% assessment growth. This table highlights the breakdown of the $26.1 million increase to the 2026 Draft Operating Budget relative to the 2025 budget and is categorized in accordance with City of Ottawa budget reporting requirements. We've allocated $30.5 million for investment needed to maintain services and to ensure continued delivery of adequate and effective policing services. The largest cost driver in this category is the negotiated collective bargaining obligations. It also includes the hiring for members whom are off on extended absences as per year three of our staff stabilization plan. The Maintain Services category exceeds the OPS base budget increase of $26.1 million for 2026 by 4.4 million, which means the OPS needs to find efficiencies and/or revenue sources to meet its collective bargaining and other inflationary pressure obligations. $2.3 million is allocated to the 25-member growth as part of the Staff Stabilization Plan Growth Pillar and includes 21 sworn members and four frontline special constable positions. Under the new service category, there are two distinct items that net to a zero pressure for the 2026 budget. The first is the final $2.2 million in the revenue and expenses from the federal government in relation to the Parliamentary Precinct. This will establish the $10 million annual base for the Parliamentary Precinct. The second item is one-time funding of $5.4 million from the city's tax stabilization reserves to offset pressures related to the delivery of strategic projects such as the Body Worn Camera Pilot and the continued implementation of the District Revitalization Project. The OPS continues to be committed to seek ways to reduce operating costs while achieving its core objectives and delivering on the Board's strategic plan. To achieve that balance, the 2026 budget includes $4.3 million of efficiencies. Lastly, the user fee increase aligned to the Board's user fee policy and ensures that user fees grow at the same pace as the costs associated to it. The 2026 OPS budget has allocated $2.4 million in user fee and revenues. Next slide, please. The table on the left highlights the breakdown of the 2026 Gross Operating Budget. The 5% tax levy supports the operating and capital requirements of the OPS to ensure the delivery of adequate and effective policing. 85% of the operating budget is allocated to compensation, including the costs of collective bargaining agreements settlements as well as the cost for overtime and WSIB. 8% is allocated towards materials, supplies, and services, including fuel for our fleet, uniforms, equipment, and safety supplies for members, required training as per the CSBA legislation, and annual software maintenance. 4% of the operating budget is allocated to capital and debt, which funds the payment for our debt on the buildings that we occupy and supports the life cycle costs for fleet, IT, and specialized equipment that is included in our capital budget. 3% is attributed to the city-related support costs such as facility operating costs, radio system costs, fleet maintenance, and other related support services where OPS and the city are integrated. The table on the right highlights the 2026 capital envelope that ensures assets such as fleet, facilities, and information technology are replaced as required. The $23.3 million budget is allocated between two categories. One is the renewal of assets requiring $15.9 million, and the second is growth and strategic initiative category requiring $7.4 million. I'll now turn it back over to the Chief for closing comments.
Thank you Deputy. Mayor, that concludes our presentation to the Mayor and Council. Thank you for your input and support. To the city manager Wendy and to Cyril, thank you to you and to your team for your collaboration to get us to this draft operating budget point. And to councillor Brockington, just to answer your question there, the Chair mentioned the FAC meeting on November 21st where there's opportunity to delegate. We also have a regular board meeting on December 5th where delegates can come forward to talk about the budget as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you Chief Stubbs, thank you Deputy Chief Bell, thank you Chair Faqarani. Councillor Brockington?
Thanks Mayor. Two of my three questions were just answered, so thank you Chief, Chair, and Deputy Chief. If members of council have questions that they want to submit by email, what email channel do we use?
Okay, we certainly, I know Deputy Chief Bell will be meeting with all the councillors in the, in, leading up to December 10th, so there's opportunities there to speak with him. But aside from that, sending him directly questions on the budget will also work.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Brockington. Any other questions? Okay, then the recommendation is the council receivable table, the Ottawa Police Service's 2026 Draft Operating in Capital Budgets. Is that carried? Just before we go back to questions on the main presentation, a thank you again to our team from OPS. Just on item 17, we have the 2026 Fleet Vehicle and Equipment Plans. Is that received? And the 2025 FTE Analysis Report, is that received? Okay, so we can go back now to the main budget item and open it up to questions from councillors on that. I don't see any hands up. Okay, councillor Carr?
Thank you. I just have a few quick questions. Sorry, I thought there'd be more questions. Just with respect to the administration, talked about lean administration and at 4.8%, I believe, what do you consider administration?
Mr. Mayor, that would be finance, HR, IT, Clerks' Office, Economic Development, Service Ottawa. The list goes on. So the main non-core, traditionally what you would refer to as non-core frontline services. I'll be fully transparent. I don't like that because I tell my team we're frontline services as well because you can't platter roads unless we pay them, but traditionally would be your enterprise administrative type functions.
Okay, does that include business system support units in each of the general managers' areas?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, you mentioned that the average cost to an urban homeowner, sorry, I didn't note the number for rural, was $237.30. What is the value of home that that is based on?
Mr. Mayor, that's based on the $415,000 assessed value. Again, as we all know, it's assessed value based on municipal provincial impact, if you will. That assessment goes back to 2016 timeframe, but that side of the taxes are calculated from your property tax bill.
Okay, thanks. So using that same assessment value of $415,000 on a house, so we know it goes back to 2016, what is the average total transit levy that will be paid for by a tax bill by a tax owner, a house owner?
Mr. Mayor, it's approximately $1,000 on total.
Approximately $1,000 for a $415,000 assessed home?
That's correct. For 2026, these details, we're getting into a little bit of detail here. It's in the transmittal report. So for 2026, it's a $74 increase for the transit component, and that's roughly what works out to be about $1,000 on a $415,000 home.
Okay, and what is the average for police?
I don't have the overall average on the total, but for the police, it's increasing by $36. I can get the average offline for you.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's good. And then just in the materials we'll be receiving this afternoon, the full list of all the service review efficiencies will be included, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. In the transmittal report, the magazine, it's, we have a table there where we itemize those. And then once we get to the committee presentation, we'll go into more detail if there's more detail needed.
Okay, thanks. And then just confirming, I understood correctly, the reserves, the total of reserves is 540 million, and the tax stabilization is about 140 million of that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Carr. Councillor Kits?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Hopefully it's in order, but if I need to bring it to committee, you can let me know. With the province moving towards producer responsibility for recycling, I have received a lot of questions regarding what are the savings to the city now that we're not responsible for delivering that service? I know that there was a revenue component to the recycling program, and of course, we are still responsible for recycling, or some recycling, like recycling in parks. So I was wondering if there's a delta there? And if you could share if the city is seeing any savings through that change?
Mr. Mayor, for committee, we'll definitely add the full breakdown. There is a savings. There's a few numbers in my head. I don't want to throw it out there, but in the transmittal report, when you do look at the efficiencies table, we've identified some of the savings there. And then once you refer to this all waste template in the EC, Environmental Committee budget book, you'll see it there further, further details.
Okay, I will look for that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if I could table two questions with the city treasurer. I just want to follow up on the tax stabilization budget line that we saw in your presentation, if I may. Could you just explain to members of council what the purpose of this specific budget line is? And what is the target amount that we want that budget line to be any given year? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so second question is the easier one. 70 million is roughly the updated maximum level. Originally, that was 52 and change in 2018 timeframe. And in the 2024 disposition report, we came back with a refresh, and we increased that to 70 million. So again, the max recommended value is 70 million. Today, it's at 140. The purpose of that use is basically to help stabilize, and you can use it for stabilizing tax rates so you don't have spikes if needed. One-time events are on for seeing things. Typically, in the annual budget, you'll see a draw from the tax stabilization in a tune of $10 to $12 million in terms of funding one-time projects, pilot initiatives, et cetera. All of our reserves do accompany with a bylaw, and there's always a clause in the bylaw that clearly states as otherwise directed by council. So if council chooses to use that, that's, you know, that flexibility is there. It's something that we traditionally hasn't leveraged.
Councillor Tuney?
Yeah, just real brief, just on procedure, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for everything today. I noticed in what was laid out, it talked about standalone investments for pedestrian and cycling at $59.6 million. In light of, and I know this because of the discussions taking place around Bill 60, how this really could have impacts on things. Obviously, we're going to ensure that that becomes a talking point prior to that. And will there be a breakout between pedestrian safety and cycling infrastructure and multi-use pathways because they all have very different impacts?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we'll take that note, and we can break that out for committee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Appreciate all of the work that went into this. So on item 12.1, the draft 2026 Operating in Capital Budgets, the recommendations to receive and table and refer the relevant portions to the standing committees. Is that carried? All right, we are going to jump to item 20.2 on the agenda, which is the Climate Ready Ottawa Strategy. And councillor Gower, I believe you had a question?
Not a question, but a comment that I wanted to raise. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff for this report, first of all. On Monday evening, we had a meeting in Stittsville where staff gave an overview of the strategy alongside some partner agencies and other city departments, and it was really well attended. We're seeing a really high level of interest and engagement in this topic from residents, which is great to see. One of the hot topics in Stittsville right now is the protection of wetlands, including the Gulburn Wetland Complex immediately west of our community. And one of its many functions is as a large storage area that can absorb water in the event of very heavy rainfall. And I just wanted to highlight for council a written submission that we received this week from Friends of Stittsville Wetlands and Ontario Nature about the importance of protecting wetlands and the infrastructure role that they play, particularly in flood management. Alarmingly, we continue to see a reduction in wetland area in Ottawa and eastern Ontario. Wetlands continue to be stripped of their provincially significant wetland status, in part due to provincial legislation changes that have reduced protection and oversight for wetlands. And the province is definitely heading in the wrong direction on this. The written submission includes several recommendations on what the city can do to strengthen wetland protection through climate ready and other policies. And I'm looking forward to continuing that discussion and working with city staff as we go forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gower. And sorry, we'll just go back to item 18.3 on the agenda, which is the zoning bylaw amendment for 6158 Rito Valley Drive. Oh, sorry. Yeah, before we do that, I should confirm that on item 20.2, is that carried? Thank you. Okay, going back to item 18.3. So I believe there is a motion that's going to be introduced at that time. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas 6158 Rito Valley Drive, commonly referred to as Miller's Berry Farm, has a number of businesses on site that are not presently in compliance with the city's zoning bylaw. And whereas through this application, the applicant is looking to increase the number of permitted heavy vehicles on site by 17 times what is permitted in the zoning bylaw on an outdoor storage area that is over 50 times what is permitted under the zoning bylaw. And whereas staff have confirmed that the applicants have not provided adequate evidence of legal non-conforming rights to these rules, to these uses. And whereas approval of the, of the application would not be consistent with the 2024 provincial planning statement. And whereas if the zoning application were to be approved, may create a concerning precedent that would severely erode protections designed to ensure the preservation of prime agricultural land. And whereas providing the recommendation is not in the best interest of rural Ottawa. And whereas the staff report recommended refusal of the proposed minor zoning bylaw amendment, and therefore be it resolved, the council refuse an amendment to the zoning bylaw 2008-250 for 6158 Rito Valley Drive. And be it further resolved, the staff be directed to continue working constructively with the applicant to bring the property into compliance with the zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleague for the motion today. We've received a fair amount of correspondence on this matter recently, and I was not able to attend AREC when this matter was before it. But my understanding of the root, the root issues of this is that the property is being used for additional purposes from what is currently permitted under the zoning and the amendment application intends to legalize those purposes. And I, first of all, just wanted to ask planning staff, is my understanding correct of this matter?
Through the mayor to the councillor, this matter originates with a bylaw complaint to the city in 2019, an investigation by our colleagues in bylaw and regulatory services that resulted in charges in 2021. So then the owner applied for a zoning bylaw amendment in '24. They have a planning consultant do that on their behalf. There's been a lot of back and forth with planning staff on the file, which ultimately involved onsite visit with staff to better understand what was going on. And the report was intended to come in September to AREC, but the proponent asked us to delay based on timing of their consultants and lawyers. So the matter was deferred to November. And maybe I'll just, if I might add a little bit of context related to this motion and your question. Under our official plan and the provincial policy legislation... Under our official plan and the provincial policy legislation, we're trying to protect both the farm and the system of farming. So we, we would look to support a variety of ag-related activities and on-farm diversified uses on any large piece of prime agricultural land. In this case, the expansion of the activities has grown over the years so that it no longer is of a scale or scope that staff believed we could support, the intent of, of our policy and our provincial policy. And it's for that reason that staff recommended the zoning change be denied, and instead, we would work with the owner to see if we could support some sort of scaling back of activity on this site in order to better comply and avoid the bylaw issues that we have today. And in terms of the non-compliance, legal non-conforming aspect of this that was referenced in the motion, the owners engaged very qualified legal counsel and professional planners on this one, who are very familiar with the city's process to determine legal non-conforming uses. And to date, staff have not had any evidence presented that supports the legal non-conforming use. We're not saying we necessarily disagree, we just don't have anything in front of us. And just to be clear, if these uses are in fact legally non-conforming, then the zoning bylaw change would not be required.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Could you just clarify, what is the land, what is, what is the current zoning of the land permit the landowner to do now?
I might ask our planning director to come forward, and this is, under our official plan, this is where the, the prime egg lands are, so it's the, the higher order of, so you can have egg-related and on-farm diversified uses, but I'll ask Derek to add a little more color to that.
Thank you.
Chair, it would be helpful if the councillor could clarify if he's just looking for what they're allowed to do specific to the ask with respect to the other businesses, the heavy construction and snow removal? Or are you looking for a total list?
I was gonna have a follow-up, but I'm trying to wrap my head around, what are they allowed to do now on their land versus what are they currently doing on the land?
If you'll bear with me just a moment, Chair, the current zoning permits agriculture-related uses in home-based businesses that would allow for three vehicles. There's a provision for outdoor storage, which I will pull up, which I believe is 100 square meters. What they're looking for through their zoning, which would be bringing their existing activity into compliance, is looking for 51 vehicles instead of three, and looking for, I think the original application called for over 5,000 square meters instead of 100 square meters, and I understand that was reduced to roughly 3,200 square meters at the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee meeting.
Thank you. And again, I apologize, I was not at that committee meeting, so I'm perhaps asking questions that have already been asked. What is at the root of staff's refusal of the application? Are you defending the agricultural designation? Does that trump everything else? Are you worried about the impacts of an expanded business in the immediate community where it sits now? What is the main driver for your refusal of the application?
Mayor, I think there's a few things that layer into the decision from staff. One of them is, you know, the scale and the intensity of the operation as it's, as it exists today and as it has evolved over time, and whether that's in keeping with home-based business provisions within the agricultural area or any other area for that matter. When we look at overall, how far the door gets opened for other types of uses in the agricultural zone, certainly appreciating that it has a benefit for this individual to be able to operate that type of business at this location, but as, as, you know, if everybody were able to do that across the city, that would, that would influence the, the value of agricultural land and potentially make it unviable for farmers to actually acquire and, and farmland themselves, because they'd be competing against other commercial businesses that have greater opportunities to pass costs to their, to the customers than, than farmers do.
Thank you for that. And my last question is, I think I heard that a matter was filed with bylaw in 2021, and the application of the property owner was formally submitted in 2024. What happened during those three years between a visit from bylaw and the application coming in?
Mayor, planning staff aren't in a position to speak to all of the background, but when we look at sort of bylaw infractions with respect to zoning, there's often, you know, an effort to work with the applicant to bring them into compliance before there is a charge laid following that, you know, often the, through that process, to achieve compliance, there's, it's not unusual for there to be an application that sort of leaves the, the enforcement state until that process for the zoning application can conclude.
All right, thank you, staff, for answers to my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. I appreciate the questions from councillor Brockington and the work staff have done, but, you know, traditionally, ARAC likes to support rural businesses, and I don't think in this case we're looking to attack any specific property owner or any specific use. It is also not as common for ARAC to be split on an item. So when we are, I think it shows that there's a lot of care and thought that is put into matters that come before our committee. And I want to acknowledge that Mr. and Mrs. Miller are here today. They are upstanding citizens in Ottawa. They are fantastic business partners for the community, for many around this table and residents across the city. They're also very well-known because they are upstanding people. They are a victim of their own success. They have run fantastic businesses that have done many good things for residents in the community. They are very generous with their time and their resources, and I know over the last few years, they've worked as hard as they can to try to bring something forward that would comply with the city's zoning bylaw so they can continue to operate. And I understand we're not there today, and our professional staff have provided a recommendation, and I support the work that staff did. They did try, and as the general manager indicated, planning staff did go out to this site, which is not something that is very common, because they wanted to ensure that they were working on something that would be site-specific and support the applicant through the process. They did come out last week to the Rural Affairs Committee, and they delegated well. I also understand that it's split in the rural area, and we've heard both sides of the argument at committee, we've seen it in our inboxes, and I can appreciate council needs to make a decision today. We're here to support local businesses, we're here to support jobs, and that's certainly my position as the ward councillor. I'm concerned that if the business doesn't continue to move forward constructively, that there may be impacts, but that's not necessarily the, the domain of council today. This is a challenging file, and I appreciate the engagement that my colleagues have provided so far, the conversations that I've had with the vast majority of you as we've gotten here today. And I just wanted to express my support publicly for the Millers, for rural businesses, and I would ask that when you vote today, you weigh some of my comments as well as the other comments from our colleagues when you vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Leaper?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I think it's important that we preserve the integrity of the planning process. This is prime agricultural land and is currently housing operations associated with trucking and excavation, landscaping, snow removal. I want to be really cautious about the creation of any moral hazard moving forward for landowners who may be similarly considering allowing their commercial businesses that are not immediately tied to the agricultural activities to, to grow. I have read the letters that have been coming in. It is remarkable how popular the Millers are and how well-respected in the community they are. I don't know them, but, you know, I believe the, I believe what people are writing to me, and I want to thank you for the contribution that you're making to the city. But as we so often encounter at Planning and Housing Committee, we can't let these decisions become popularity contests. We have direction from the province to maintain our rural agricultural land as rural agricultural land, and I do hope that colleagues around the table today will vote in favor of the Kits motion. Thank you. Is it the Kits motion? Oh, sorry, the Kelly motion.
Thank you. Councillor Luloff?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, this has been a really challenging file from, from the very beginning. I want to start by acknowledging staff for their thorough work and my colleagues for the thoughtful discussion that we've had around this table and at the ARAC table as well. These are really not easy decisions. They require us to find a balance between upholding city policy and recognizing the realities faced by people who live and work in our rural communities. The applicant in this case has been operating on this property for over 30 years. This isn't a new or speculative venture. It's a longstanding local business that has evolved over time to meet the needs of both the farm and the wider community. And through that growth, it's created local jobs, supported families, and helped keep a farm viable in a really difficult economy. We heard clearly at the Rural Summit that farmers and rural entrepreneurs need more flexibility. Many of them are looking for ways to diversify so that they can sustain their farming operations. The current framework doesn't always make that easy. And I think we have a responsibility to listen to what we heard and apply some common sense when those situations come before us. Now, I understand that this operation is significantly larger than what is typically permitted. The increase of three vehicles to 51 is substantial, but it's also important to clarify what that means. We're not talking about 51 heavy trucks clogging a residential street. We're talking about a combination of farm machinery, snow clearing equipment, and hauling vehicles, the kinds of tools that allow rural businesses to stay productive year-round and keep the farm operational. The applicant is a farmer first and foremost. The secondary business helps sustain the primary one, not replace it. That said, I completely understand the frustration of the family who lives across the road. The noise and activity would test anyone's patience, and I believe that every effort must be made to reduce that disruption, especially during evenings and in the overnight hours. If council supports this today, it cannot be seen as a blank check. The Millers must continue to work closely with staff to manage and mitigate impacts on neighboring properties, and I'm confident that there are ways to do that. Better screening, clearer operating hours, and open communication can go a long way towards being a good neighbor. I also understand the broader concerns raised by colleagues about precedent. This is not a one-off situation, and we'll certainly need to have a larger discussion about how we handle similar operations in the rural area. And it's an, it's an opportunity to look at our policies and ask whether they're still serving the people that they're meant to serve. So for me, like this, this decision comes down to balance. We can support rural entrepreneurship and economic resilience while still respecting the peace and character of our rural areas. It doesn't have to come at the expense of the other, but it takes good faith and cooperation from everyone involved. So while I recognize the challenges that this presents, I'm going to support the application because I believe that farmers who innovate and create local employment are essential to the future of rural Ottawa, but that support has never come at the expense of the peace and sanity of the neighbors who share those communities. So thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, councillor Luloff. Councillor Devine?
Thank you, Chair. I certainly do appreciate hearing from my, my rural colleagues just how sensitive a matter this is, and I sympathize the problem as expressed, you know, a victim of their own success. What I, but I also, what the line that resonates in the, in the, in the Kelly Kits motion is, whereas approving the original ARAC recommendation is not in the best interests of rural Ottawa, so I'm sensitive to that. What I would like to ask staff, because I'm not sure if, if there's a concern with additional growth or even a concern with the status quo, but in the second, be it resolved clause or be it further resolved, that staff be directed to continue working constructively with the applicant to bring the property into compliance with the zoning bylaw, could staff let me know what you mean by continuing to work constructively?
Chair, the question of whether the existing or future, you know, is it a future growth or existing? I think staff's perspective is that the existing is beyond the elements of a home-based business, so there are concerns whether that meets the policies today. I think, you know, the, the mechanism to work with them to bring it into compliance would be to reduce the amount of activity of off, of non-farm business on the site, seeing it, giving it, providing an opportunity for it to be relocated elsewhere, so that the site itself would be brought into compliance.
And so further to that, because I can understand that this, the status quo was just achieved through, through the natural growth of the business, it wasn't achieved through any kind of, or malice or male intent, but by looking to continue to work constructively to bring it back into compliance, and if staff is saying that even the status quo can pose risks, by continuing to work constructively, will there be a timeline whereby you try to bring the site back into compliance? Does working constructively mean perhaps not issuing any fines? If it is, if the status quo is deemed to be a concern, I'd like to know, I guess, to what degree work constructively means, and are there any further expectations of when you expect to bring it back into compliance?
Through the mayor, just, I mean, we have to remember the limits of planning tools. So the, this starts as a bylaw issue, and an order was issued by my colleague, so he may have some more to say here, but from a planning perspective, there is very, should council support ARAC's recommendation and allow this to go forward, I would ask that the bylaw in the agenda here today be pulled so that we can revisit the bylaw in the context of their operations and see if there's anything we, we could add into that bylaw in terms of how they will be operating and how we see this working. We already know there's some concern on the part of the owner and their consultants in terms of how the bylaw has been drafted. I mean, this wasn't what council, it wasn't what staff recommended, so it was put together quickly, and, and so I think we need to reconsider it regardless of which way council's decision goes today. But the, from a planning perspective, we can, we have more tools if we are initiating an approval than if we are trying to mitigate an impact within existing zoning. So within existing zoning, that's really a bylaw enforcement issue, but we certainly work with our colleagues.
Derek, had you been about to say something? No? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, councillor Devine. So we will vote on the motion by councillor Kelly, which is to refuse the application, just to be clear. So if we could have a recorded vote on the motion by councillor Kelly, please.
Councillor Currie?
Yes.
Councillor King?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Carr? Councillor Dudas?
Yes.
Councillor Leaper?
Yes.
Councillor Troster?
Yes.
Councillor Hill?
Yes.
Councillor Luloff?
No.
Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor Kits?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor De Rush?
Yes.
Councillor Lowe?
Yes.
Conseilleur Plante?
Oui.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Councillor Devine?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Skolski?
No.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Mayor Sutcliffe?
Yes.
19 yeas, 6 nays.
Okay, thank you. So that motion is carried. We will move now to item 24. There are no in-camera items. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority is that received. Motion to adopt reports, councillor De Rush?
Thank you, Mayor. I was by myself, seconded by councillor Troster, that the report from the Director of Fleet Services entitled 2026 Fleet Vehicle and Equipment Plans Information Supplemental to the Budget Estimates, and that the report from the Chief Human Resource Officer entitled 2025 FTE Analysis Report Information Supplemental to the Budget Estimates, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 29, Community Services Committee Report 19, Environment and Climate Change Committee Report 20, Finance and Corporate Services Committee Report 30, Planning and Housing Committee Report 56, and Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Report 22 be received and adopted as amended.
Is that carried? Thank you. Motions of which notice has previously been given, the commemorative street sign blade for Company of Fools at Strathcona Park. Conseilleur Plante, did you want to speak to that, or? Okay. Okay.
I'll just read that therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to install one commemorative sign blade recognizing Company of Fools' thirty-fifth anniversary on Range Road at Strathcona Park. Merci beaucoup.
Merci à vous. Is that carried? Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. We have a motion from Counselor Brockington on Hurricane Melissa that is time-sensitive on suspension of the rules. Is that carried?
Carried.
Counselor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to move this. I can't find my printed motion, but it's on the screen, and I thank you... Thanks to Counselor King for seconding. So where is Hurricane Melissa, one of the strongest storms ever recorded in the Caribbean, made landfall as a category-five hurricane in Jamaica on October twenty-eighth? And where has the hurricane caused widespread devastation in Jamaica, resulting in at least nineteen deaths, massive infrastructure and agricultural damage, and billions of dollars in losses? Whereas Haiti experienced torrential rains, flooding, and landslides that claimed more than thirty lives and displaced thousands. Whereas Cuba was struck on October twenty-ninth as a category-three storm damaging homes, roads, and power networks across several eastern provinces, to the evacuation of more than seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand people, preventing greater loss of life. Whereas the Bahamas and other nearby islands sustained heavy flooding, power outages, and property damage as Hurricane Melissa moved northward toward the region. Whereas the United Nations and regional officials report that the combined economic losses exceed fifty billion U.S., with tens of thousands of families in need of immediate humanitarian assistance. Whereas Ottawa City Council has previously approved motions to assist international disaster relief efforts, including those responding to major hurricanes and earthquakes affecting Caribbean nations. Therefore, be it resolved that City Council encourage residents of Ottawa to consider making a donation to support disaster relief efforts in the Caribbean, and that the city's website post information on how residents may contribute to reputable charities such as the Canadian Red Cross, Project Hope, and the United Nations World Food Program, providing humanitarian assistance to those affected by Hurricane Melissa or through the government of Jamaica's official disaster relief program. And may I just briefly? What I'll say is, in the past, City Council has approved motions like these to encourage local residents and businesses to contribute to reputable charities. My office has worked with the embassies and High Commission here in Ottawa on how to direct people to make financial contributions, to make sure the right charities or the charities best able to serve people in these nations. These countries have been hit more than once, Mayor, whether it's the earthquake in Haiti or other hurricanes, and they really don't have the financial means, being smaller countries, to rebuild as quickly as other Western countries. So any assistance that we can provide, not just people who originate from Jamaica or Haiti or Cuba and live in Ottawa, but as Ottawaans, we come together and help fellow residents who need assistance. So hopefully, council will adopt this today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Brockington. Counselor King?
Thank you, your worship, and I'd like to thank Counselor Brockington for moving this motion. This storm has impacted our neighbors. Ottawa is home to vibrant Caribbean communities, the Jamaican-Canadian community, the Haitian-Canadian community, and the Cuban-Canadian community, and others who have family members, friends, and loved ones struggling to rebuild their lives right now. When disaster strikes abroad, the pain is felt deeply here at home. This council has a proud tradition of responding to international crises with compassion. We've stood with communities affected by earthquakes, hurricanes, and other natural disasters. Today, we have an opportunity to stand with the Caribbean once again, not with empty words, but with meaningful action. The motion before us is straightforward. It encourages Ottawa residents to donate to reputable relief organizations and directs our city's website to provide clearer information on how they can help. It costs our taxpayers nothing but speaks volumes about our values. When our neighbors are suffering, Ottawa responds. I urge all members of council to vote in favor of this motion and to share this message with your constituents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor King. Thank you both for bringing this forward. Is that carried? We have a motion from Counselor King requiring suspension of the rules on waiving demolition control for nine-two-five Marguerite Avenue. On suspension of the rules, is that carried? Counselor King?
Thank you so much, your worship. Whereas the building at the address known as nine-two-five Marguerite Avenue is vacant due to significant damage from a fire in 2018, and whereas the vacant building has been boarded since 2018 with cause of concern to public safety and trespassing, it is in the public interest to demolish the building. And whereas there is currently no building permit application for a replacement building, and whereas the property was recently purchased by a new owner looking to proceed with a housing development, and whereas the current property owner is seeking financing with Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, but the vacant derelict house is a liability affecting financing, and whereas the demolition of the uninhabitable house will allow for this development process to proceed to demolition permit in a timely manner while the owner prepares planning applications for a new development, and whereas the residential use building is subject to demolition control, which is an application process that can take up to ninety-eight days for a decision plus post-approval requirements, and whereas by waiving the demolition control application, the city will not receive five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and twenty cents, including one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents legal fee plus HST, which is the fee associated with a demolition control application. And therefore be it resolved that council waive demolition control approval and allow the owners to proceed directly to seeking a demolition permit for the safe removal of the building at nine-two-five Marguerite Avenue, and be it further resolved that the fees related to the demolition control application be waived totaling five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and twenty cents, including one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents legal fee plus HST, and be it further resolved this waiver of demolition control is null and void if the associated demolition permit is not issued within three months of council's exemption.
Thank you, Counselor King. Is that carried? Notices of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting. As you know, I don't normally make motions from the chair, but with council's indulgence, I will do so in this case. Whereas Robin Mary Elizabeth Guest was a beloved wife, mother, grandmother, daughter, sister, friend, and a tireless builder of a better Ottawa. And whereas Robin was raised to have a public-spirited heart and a belief that a community is something you make, not just a place you live in. And whereas Robin Guest dedicated over thirty years to public service, including twenty years of exemplary service to the city of Ottawa, serving in progressively senior roles, including Coordinator of Intergovernmental Relations, Program Manager of Policy Coordination, Director of Policy in the mayor's office, and most recently as Chief of Staff to the mayor. And whereas Robin played a pivotal role in shaping major civic initiatives, such as the Ottawa Central Library, the Ottawa Art Gallery, Lansdowne Park, LRT Stage Two, and the groundwork for the new Civic Hospital, demonstrating unmatched leadership, collaboration, and vision. And whereas Robin was known for her grace, intelligence, tenacity, and unwavering commitment to public service, and whose dedication has undoubtedly enhanced the quality of life for all residents. And whereas Robin's legacy includes not only her professional achievements, but also her personal dedication to fostering children, giving back to and building her community, and living with authenticity, compassion, and courage. And whereas Arlington Park, located in a neighborhood Robin cherished and served, offers a fitting location to honor her memory and contributions to the city of Ottawa. Therefore, be it resolved that City Council approve the commemorative naming of Arlington Park, located at one-sixty-five Arlington Avenue, to Robin Guest Park, in honor of Robin Mary Elizabeth Guest, in recognition of her outstanding service and enduring impact on the city of Ottawa. And be it further resolved that an appropriate stand and plaque be installed displaying the name and including a brief history of Robin Guest's contributions. Thank you, colleagues. Yes, Counselor Lulov?
If you moved to waive the rules, we could pass that. You want to wait?
Yeah, we can vote on it next time.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Conseilleur Plante?
Merci, Monsieur le maire. Whereas City Council declared, quote, "an affordable housing and homelessness crisis and emergency" at its meeting of January twentieth, twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, and where it joined the Solve the Crisis campaign of the Ontario's big city mayors focused on addressing the homelessness and mental health and addictive crisis in Ontario. Whereas the Government of Ontario tabled Bill Sixty Fighting Delays Building Faster Act 2025 on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas Schedule Twelve of Bill Sixty amends the Residential Tendencies Act 2006 to, among other things, make changes to the Landlord Tenant Tribunal, LTB, with a focus on strengthening landlord rights, providing shorter timelines for tenant evictions, and improving the speed and effectiveness of the LTB to address active case backlog. And whereas a province has decided to rescind consultation on the most contentious amendment, namely that government would consult with alternative options on lease agreement expiry, which is code for ending fixed lease... fixed-term leases. And whereas the rest of the proposed amendments, per the technical briefs, page eleven to fifteen of the Residential Tendencies Act, would severely curtail tenant rights at the LTB. Whereas the Ontario Association of Municipalities, AMO, recognizes that landlords need adequate rights to provide rental opportunities to increase housing supply, but does not endorse the amendments citing the need for a balanced approach that provides tenants with strong protection from unlawful and illegal evictions, such as bad faith renovations. Whereas more than one-hundred-and-thirty organizations have signed an open letter asking the provincial government to repeal proposed changes to rental protections they warn will deepen the provincial housing and homelessness crisis. And whereas Acorn launched an online action calling on the provincial government to drop its dangerous proposal, which two-three-hundred Ontarians sent emails to Premier Ford, Housing Minister Rob Flack, Attorney General Doug Downey, and MPPs across the province demanding they do not make amendments that erode tenants' rights at the LTB. Whereas those who support the provincial government-proposed amendment cite the possibility that it will free up many vacant units and incentivize landlords to rent. And whereas the Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives challenged this assertion by providing Attorney General that, "I'm convinced if we get the right balance, we'll unlock tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of new units by combining the vacant unit report with four of the most populated areas of the province, adding up to only seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred vacant units." And whereas the city of Ottawa has a comparatively low vacancy rate, for example, of the six-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five units assessed as vacant, forty-two percent were exempt from the vacant unit tax due to unacceptable reason for being empty, that the amount of renters is expected to jump from around thirty-six percent of Ottawa households to jump to forty-three percent by 2035, according to the Housing Needs Assessment. Whereas council just passed the Housing Action Plan on October eighth, 2025, in which it provides major incentives for builders and landlords, but not at the expense of renters, and in which consultation and strength in capacity for affordable housing is one of five key objectives of the plan. And whereas the city of Ottawa recently approved the feasibility of rental renovation licensing program renovation bylaw that would completely undercut if the amendments were passed. Therefore, be it resolved City Council inform the Government of Ontario of its opposition to the changes of the Residential Tendencies Act in Bill Sixty and the weakening of tenant rights, including contemplative changes to security of tenure or a further weakening of rent control through the mayor writing to the Premier of Ontario, General Finance, Housing Ministers of Ontario on behalf of council. Be it further resolved that the City Council request the Government of Ontario to reinstate rent control provisions on rental homes first occupied after 2018. Merci beaucoup.
Merci à vous. Are there any other notices of motion?
Myself, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's for commemorative naming for a gentleman in my ward. Whereas on July tenth, 2024, City Council approved the commemorative naming policy. And whereas in keeping with its powers set out in the Municipal Act 2001, council may assign a commemorative name by resolution, notwithstanding the provisions included in the commemorative naming policy. And whereas Bob Easy has contributed more than five decades to coaching and organizing minor hockey in the communities of Munster and Richmond, helping young athletes of all levels develop skills and a love of the game. And whereas Mr. Easy has been instrumental in establishing and supporting local minor hockey programs in Osgood, Munster, and Richmond, strengthening youth sport and community life across rural Ottawa. And whereas Mr. Easy's exceptional dedication has been recognized by the city of Ottawa with the Mayor's City Builder Award on the twenty-second of February, 2017, and nationally with the Sovereign's Medal for Volunteers, March twentieth, 2017. And whereas Mr. Easy continues to give back to the community through ongoing volunteerism and local fundraising that benefits area youth, sports, and local charities, therefore be it resolved that the Ball Diamond located in Munster North Park, located at two-seven-seven-eight Munster Road, be named the Bob Easy Ball Diamond, and be it further resolved that an appropriate stand and plaque be installed displaying the name and including a brief history of Mr. Easy's contributions, and be it further resolved that all costs related to the production and installation of the stand and plaque be funded through fundraising and other eligible sources. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. I'll just note the notices of intent from the Integrity Commissioner and Build Ottawa that are on the agenda. Motion to introduce bylaws. Counselor DeRash?
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Troster, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed, with exception to the following bylaw listed as EE on the agenda. EE, a bylaw of the city of Ottawa to amend bylaw number two-thousand-eight-dash-two-fifty to change the zoning of part of the lands known municipally as six-one-five-eight Rita Valley Drive North.
Is that carried? Confirmation bylaw? Counselor DeRash?
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Troster, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of twelve November, 2025.
Is that carried? Are there any inquiries? Motion to adjourn. Counselor DeRash?
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Troster, that the proceedings of the City Council meeting of twelve November, 2025 be adjourned.
Is that carried? Thank you, everyone. Merci.
Can you just move that mic please?
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us for today's media availability. I will now invite each agency in reverse alphabetical order to ask their questions. You may ask one question with a follow up. We'll now start with.
Hello? Some councillors were criticizing the budget. Sorry, I can't hear you. Can you go closer to the mic? Some councillors were criticizing the budget. Because the municipality tax raise is low, especially councillor Leeper. What can you say to them? You know, I've heard from councillors that the increase of municipality taxes are low. But this is not the same that I'm hearing from residents. I'm always present in the community. Every day I talk to residents. When I go door to door, when I participate in events, I talk to them. We are, they are facing an affordability crisis. We can't go ahead with increases such as Toronto or Vancouver, and it's not needed. You know, we work very hard to improve efficiency within the city of Ottawa. We're talking about half a quarter of a billion. This is what we found over the past three years. And we were able to get funding from the other government levels. That's why we're able to have a modest increase of municipality taxes. At the same time, we're able to invest in our priorities such as public safety, transit, infrastructure, support to vulnerable population as well as affordable housing. Thank you so much. Follow up question, do you have anyone? Any? Now Louise Michel, Radio Canada.
Bonjour.
Hello? I would like to ask you a question about affordable housing. So it will be three hundred and fifty units for a value of twenty three million dollars. This was, there was a decision in twenty twenty one. I would like to know if you are going to reach your objective. The objective taken in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. How many units? Can you repeat your question? It was five hundred units over a period of five years. Per year for over a period of five years, but you never reached these objectives. And you were also talking about the fifteen thousand units that were projected. The draft budget is only talking about three hundred and fifty affordable units. Answer? I don't have the numbers that of what has been built right now, but I know we will be investing a hundred and fifty million dollars during our mandate compared to forty million dollars in the previous mandate. We are investing a lot in affordable housing. And I've heard that we can build eight hundred and forty extra unit with these investments. We are working king with Ottawa community housing as well as with other organizations. And right now we're building the highest numbers of unit possible. Maybe we can find more details because right now I don't have all the the numbers. I can send you a follow up email. So the numbers that I have in hands and what is going on in the city of Ottawa. Thank you so much. Aidan Homer, Citizen.
Hi Aidan, Mr Mayor. We heard Chief Stubbs talking about how while we saw numbers, crime stats that were increasing over the previous ten years. He mentioned that call volume has actually decreased over the last year. So I'm wondering how in light of that number, how you landed on the five percent increase and where you see the greatest priority, I suppose, for the twenty five new officer hires.
So I'll I'll leave the question about priorities in part to the to the chief, but you know, we we have seen increases in a number of different areas. We've seen an increase in hate crimes, in antisemitism, islamophobia, anti-black racism. The police service are doing great work in that area, but I think they need more resources in that area. I hear from residents all the time about issues like speed racing and car theft. We know that the auditor general has already done a report on how the number of patrols in the in the community, the required number of patrols in the community, the minimum, has not changed in quite some time, and that's despite the fact that our population has grown significantly over that time. So we cover, you know, the auto police service covers a huge geographic area, four and a half times the size of Toronto. And to have only a limited number of patrols available for rural communities and suburban communities is very challenging. People want to see more of an emphasis on safety and security. So I think there are a number of ways, a number of areas where we can invest. The police service is serving a growing community. The population of Ottawa has grown significantly and and I think people want to see this kind of investment in emergency services. So I think it's a very reasonable investment to support the district policing model and to support the staff stabilization model that the police have talked about because they have a number of people who who can no longer serve in frontline roles because of PTSD and mental health challenges and that sort of thing. So they have a staff stabilization plan. They have a district policing model that will mean more resources will be deployed in every part of the city, and we need to support that.
I also wanted to ask about the staff, the efficiencies that were mentioned by Cyril Rogers and by Stephenson. Can you give any more specifics about where some of those efficiencies were found?
Absolutely. So we have a full list in the budget documentation. We have just about, just around six million dollar savings in facilities rationalization, one of the prime ones there. Earlier on this term, we came forward a report where Constellation, which is one of our main administrative buildings, we will be taking that ownership back over and through that transaction will garnish about six million dollars worth of savings. That's now here for twenty twenty six budget. We have another one point nine savings on fleet efficiencies. We're seeing efficiencies in our fuel. And as we do our transformation throughout fleet, as I've talked about the past three budgets, there's additional money there. We have one point five million savings from discretionary spending freeze. We have additional savings from our workforce management strategy in terms of managing the staff we need, investing in core services. And the full list is there in the budget documentation.
Thank you.
Le Droid. A good day again. In the budget, you said that there are two hundred and twenty two million dollars for the most vulnerable. Could you give us a bit of details on that? Yes? Maybe Cyril could answer that. We can give you a list of the investments if you prefer. Yeah, okay. I don't have any other question. Thank you.
We'll go to Lila Rock at CTV Ottawa.
CTV.
My question is for Cyril. What is the projected deficit for OC Transpo for twenty twenty six?
I wouldn't characterize it as a deficit. The reality is in the twenty twenty six budget, we do have forty seven million dollars earmark for provincial funding. And that ties right into the province's commitment in terms of the upload to LRT, as the mayor spoke about, and it was in the actual, the budget statement for the province. So that placeholder is there as we go through the process of the upload. And I'll characterize it very similar to the Ottawa Ontario deal, or sorry, the Ontario Ottawa deal, where we're going through the process for the upload of the one seventy four. So that was announced two years ago. They provided some funding on the interim as we go through due diligence process. So my expectation would be a similar type format in terms of what they've done there, where they'll do some pre-funding or seed funding, if you will, as we go through that due diligence process.
But currently we're forty seven million dollars in the hole for OC Transpo?
So again, this is the characterization. The budget assumptions assumes that we will get that forty seven million as per the commitment to do the upload in terms of aligning to, you know, similar practices that the province has followed through the one seventy four.
Two years ago was my last budget that I reported on, and you said to the council table that transit kept you up at night. That was the part of the budget that worried you the most. Well, part of the budget keeps you up at night this budget or worries you the most?
Yeah, I would say transit is still there, but I'm now getting a couple hours sleep, given the commitment from the province, if you want to characterize it that way. I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, very exciting for us to see that commitment. Now we got to go through that process. It's a strong budget, as I laid today, in terms of the the balance between everything. And I think that's what it really comes down to is, you know, still working forward in terms of getting that upload secured and in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Kate Porter, CBC Radio.
Hi Kate.
Hi. It's, my questions are actually for either Cyril or Wendy. So I was just looking at the tax stabilization reserve and it's absolutely soared, right? It's it's doubled or so since twenty twenty two and quadrupled since twenty twenty. So if it's at a hundred and forty million, I'm wondering what's the policy for how big that can get without using it towards like the transit placeholder or preventing efficiencies?
So the, we came forward in earlier this year with an update to our reserve management policy. And that's where we updated the, the recommended max level would be seventy million. But as part of that discussion, going back to detailing of the twenty twenty five budget and the disposition of the twenty twenty four results, we had a backstop in there, additional thirty six million dollars for a shortfall in funding for twenty twenty five, if that did not come through provincial government. So again, you know, that balance is good. It provides another layer of risk mitigation. So just because it's, you know, seventy million above the recommended max, we're still risk mitigating against, you know, in year shortfalls on transit as much as, you know, the commitment is there from the forty seven million in this budget. That's a risk mitigation that we're using to backstop that as needed.
It's really big though. One forty million?
I haven't heard anyone complain about having too big of a bank account. It's a, it's a core risk mitigation that we use. So again, these are the things that when our credit agencies come in, they look at our plans, all of our long range financial plans, they look at our reserve balances, they look at our debt loads, and then they start layering, okay, what's your risk mitigation? You know, pre twenty twenty, pre pandemic, it wasn't a thing. Now all of a sudden, these types of things come into the discussion point. So I better be cautiously there in terms of getting through the challenges that we need to go through for the LRT discussions and due diligence before we consider any type of spending spree, if you will.
Okay. The other part that's related to this, though, is if the police budget didn't need to see the six point five percent levy, right? And they're using five point four million out of tax stabilization, is that not just like another way of moving money around so that the tax rate looks better?
No, so one of the purpose of the tax stabilization, I think councillor Brockner or someone asked me that question, is really for one time, one time things. So in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, the police actually had a surplus of eight, eight point seven million. That surplus goes into the tax stabilization reserve. In this budget, there's just over five million dollars worth of projects that are kind of pilot type projects in terms of this is a course, core use of the trend of tax stabilization reserve. So again, really, we're just basically taking out some of the surplus from prior years to fund one time initiatives, pilot programs in terms of, you know, are these the right level of funding as we move forward with those processes and details?
Thanks.
Thank you.
A follow up?
We'll go to Arthur Whitecrummy at CBC Ottawa.
So my first will also be for you Cyril. So obviously transit and police are getting an outsized boost from taxes, but the overall citywide levy is only going up two percent, I think I saw in your PowerPoint. And I'm wondering when we have inflation running at, I think, two point four percent is what I saw in the last update, it's sometimes been higher than that. How is that not starving city services from growing?
So what's important, you've heard me talk about this before. The property taxes is only about forty eight percent of the revenue sources coming in. We have user fees, we have investment income, which in twenty twenty four was like forty four million surplus. We have a multitude of non-departmental revenue accounts that increase without impacting the tax base. So from a citywide perspective, those are all levers that we have in the citywide. That's something like police and transit have limited levers, but over on our side, we have those other revenue elements. In addition, when you look at the overall efficiencies that we've been able to garnish in this budget, forty five million dollars, a lot of those are again core corporate type efficiencies. When, when you think about the Constellation building that I talked about, six million dollars worth of savings, that's in the citywide bucket. When I talk about the fleet fuel savings of, you know, one point nine, two million dollars, that's in the corporate citywide bucket. So there's more tools in our toolbox in the citywide bucket. And that's why it's always a one to one type relationship, and it's okay for some levers to be different as we look across our different levies.
And this will be for the mayor. We just spoke to Jeff Leeper and he said that when, when he hears you say stability, he interprets that as meaning status quo, that, you know, the city has a lot of problems, crumbling infrastructure, other needs, and that this budget will not keep up with those problems. I'm wondering if you could respond to that?
Well, I, you know, the budget was just introduced today, so I'm I'm not sure how everybody could have a clear idea of all of the investments that are in the budget. But look, we're investing significantly, as I, as I explained this morning. You know, many of the investments we're making in areas like repairing our roads and infrastructure, public transit, affordable housing, supporting the most vulnerable, public safety. These are not just incremental increases in what we're spending, but significant increases over the last term of council. So we're investing significantly in the priorities that residents have identified for us in our term of council priorities that were voted on by the entire council. And and we're, we're investing heavily in those areas to provide more and better service to our residents at the same time as we are protecting them from high tax increases. We know that higher tax increases contribute to inflation. They have an impact on homeowners and renters alike. They have an impact on small businesses. And so I don't want to contribute to inflation and and drive up the cost of living for our residents when we can find other solutions like finding savings and efficiencies and getting investment from other levels of government. So I disagree. I think we are investing significantly in the priorities that we've identified as councillors and and in my role as mayor, as what we approved as the term of council priorities and in the priorities that have been brought to my attention by the residents of Ottawa.
Thank you. This concludes today's media availability. So si conclut a point de pres d'aujourd'hui.